What's up? Okay, we're all ready to start. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 20th, 2018 Southboard Meeting. I'm John Martin. Francine Tishman, Jim LaBrie, Matt Rowland, and Maureen Groden up here. Call the order. We're gonna do the pledge of allegiance first. All stand.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're going out live tonight. It's also being recorded. And happy holidays to everyone. Thanks for coming to the meeting. Appointments, apparently we have none. We have no hearings, so we're gonna go right to the reports. Just to make it a little different, Ed, why don't you go first?
Excellent.
All right. Just to let you know, a temporary assistant town clerk position has been posted, and we already have had a few responses to that already. The appraisal for the Palmeroy Meadow Road 15-acre parcel has been updated due to further information which was received concerning the perk tests which were done on the property. The information has been sent to the state agency overseeing the drinking water protection grant application, and they have allowed us to amend our budget for the grant accordingly. The... Let's see if I can remember this correctly. The original appraisal was for $325, and the updated one was for $425. So, and the budget has been... The total budget has been amended accordingly. The state allowed us to do that. The scanner and computer for the joint regional scanning project through the city of Northampton has been set up. Lucy Dalton, Art Lawrence, and myself have been trained on the system. Judy Zedonis' first day of work was today in my office, and everyone here was very welcoming to her, including myself.
She coming back tomorrow?
Not tomorrow, but on Monday.
Okay. Good one.
I enjoy my private time here when I'm here on Fridays.
That's right, yeah.
We have received our contract with the state for the grant PVPC applied for us to help to develop and implement new stormwater design standards through local land regulations in the amount of $10,900. I am named as the contract manager for that grant contract. This is a reimbursable grant where we would expend the money first and then be reimbursed from the state. Would the board give me their authorization to sign the grant contract on behalf of the town and to manage it?
Okay, can we hear a motion on that?
I move to authorize Ed to sign the grant contract.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Let's see, again, the next special project I'll be working on is finding a qualified consultant to perform the feasibility envelope study evaluation of the police station, which is the old town hall on East Street. Tom Quillen did suggest Roofing Company to contact to nail the loose metal roof panels on the zip to barn. I did leave them a message. They have contacted me, and I'll be meeting them there tomorrow to look at the repairs and see what they may be able to do to secure the metal roof and maybe make it watertight. However, we will still need to identify a funding source to perform any repair work to that roof.
Tomorrow's a good day to test it out.
Well, that's actually what he had said. He says it's supposed to be raining heavy, so we can go inside and see... I mean, the loose panels are one thing. We can see those, but we can also go inside and see how either watertight or nonwatertight it is. The emergency generator for the town hall is still scheduled to be shipped the week of January 14th. And then upcoming, the January 29th select board meetings are the special one on Thursday the 3rd, and then the regular meetings are on the Tuesdays, January 8th and 22nd. That's my report. Thank you.
Where is the Conan Roof and Masonery?
I'm finalizing the contract with them.
Okay. So, still hoping to get it done this year, or...?
Well, I suppose if we got some warm weather, it's a possibility, but... Or if they... If we got... Or if they wanted... You've got the roofing issue, but you've also got the mortar on the...
Yeah, they're not gonna be able to do the mortar.
On the fireplace, so, you know, unless they wanted to like tent it and put a heater in there for it to cure, that's probably a bigger concern.
Okay, thanks.
At this point. But we'll work that out.
Okay, thank you. Maureen, would you like to start?
Sure. Concom met Monday, the usual business, plus they are putting forward an article for the warrant. That's on our agenda. Open space has not met. We're waiting anxiously to hear about the grant for Glendale. Council of Aging hasn't met, but they have a very busy calendar for January, including some trips to MGM. So, please check that. And then CPC meets the 2nd of January. No updates.
Thank you. Matt?
Safety Committee hasn't met since the last meeting. Board of Health met at the same time as our last meeting and also gave a report at our last meeting, which was pretty well done. They haven't met since, and PQB will be discussing some of those, the PCFs, tonight.
You said the Safety Committee hasn't met.
I'm sorry, Capital Committee.
Capital Committee, okay. Jim?
The Plenary Board met on Wednesday evening. Nothing really big going on there, although I think we just had somebody file a preliminary subdivision, so we'll be moving on that. I'm not sure the details of that yet. They'll probably be at our next meeting.
Okay. Francine?
Okay. The Norris School Committee met on Monday, December 17th. At the opening of the meeting, there were statements by a number of teacher/residents, teachers who are residents of Southampton, citing, you know, the items of concern on the contract negotiations. There was a description of the need expressed for a language-based LD instructor, and that would... If Norris were to hire their own, that would prevent us from having to send school students out to other districts, and according to what was said, there seemed to be enough students at Norris who could benefit and could keep one full-time staff member busy. And then finally, Erin's here tonight, and she's gonna talk about some repairs to the school a little bit later on.
On the council, or did anybody present a... Like a return on if we hire somebody versus how much we're paying already to send out?
We didn't get into that detail, but it seemed as though they had enough to fill a classroom, which in essence, if you multiply that by the number of students you would have to send out, plus the money to transport them, I... It would sound to me like it would be a cost-saving measure if we were to do it, but, you know, that's all subject to next year's budget and school planning, and I'm just here to report the discussion.
So, I guess question... I guess I can ask you, Erin, if you don't mind. So, are they... Are you planning to put that in the budget for next year with a return saying if we hire here, this is what it'll save us?
Yeah, so this all came up, Erin Kuchar, Fort 9 Coleman Road. This came up because we just got two out-of-district placements that were identified like last week and are going to affect this year's, 'cause, I mean, meaning they'll like go out in a couple of weeks, probably.
So, it's all...
So, correct. But I had a meeting today with everybody, and we're... For our meeting on January 3rd, or whatever that day is, we're gonna have some scenarios and idea... And cost structure and stuff like that to kind of identify some of this, 'cause it's an entire program that I think needs to be put into place, because there's other kids that are at risk of out-of-district also. So, it's kind of a big thing, but I think on the 3rd we'll have more information.
They'll develop as you go.
Yeah, yeah.
Would one... Excuse me. Would one of the ideas of that be to collaborate with other elementary schools in the district? In the regional district?
Yeah, we talked today about it being possibly a classroom, right? Like, we talked about a language-based classroom, but we would have to have at least a year under our belt and kinks worked out before you can put it out to other people. But a future idea would be that it could be something that we would house at Norris and attract some other kids that would actually pay tuition to come to us, so have some ideas.
Any good idea like that is great. Okay. Francine, anything else?
That's it.
Okay. I just came from the Safety Complex Committee, and there's no real update. The land on College Highway is still in the process of the attorney, so hopefully we'll hear something in the next couple of weeks on that. Okay. Next, we have quarterly reports from the Police and Fire. Lieutenant Ellingsworth, how are you?
Well, how are you, sir?
Good. Would you mind coming up?
Sure.
Appreciate you coming in.
I'm here on behalf of Chief Goyette. He wasn't able to make it today. As far as the budget goes, in general, we expended about 44% of the budget, so we're on task for upcoming foreseeable expenses, which include department in-service training for the winter, and that entails about 24 hours of training per officer of the department. It also... Vacation coverage for late spring and June vacation requests, as well as anticipated criminal case investigations, court time, and so forth relative to any cases that may develop in the meantime. So, with 44% of the budget expended, I think that we're doing well and on task. Wages specifically, regular wages, were about 41% expended. Overtime's about 47%. And again, I think we're still on point due to what I had mentioned earlier. Building expenses, they're a little bit high, about 55.6% for this time of the year, but that was as a result of building maintenance that we needed to have done at the town hall, the former town hall, the police department. We had some heating and cooling issues, and as a result, we got new duct work, at least some duct work framed in, and we had to alter the zones to make it more efficient. As a result of the old system, some rooms were getting heated, and no one was in those rooms, so we had that restructured. We also had to get a new condenser for the AC unit. There are some anticipated and unexpected potential expenses coming up. In particular, we've realized that our police department server, our computer server, is out of date and is quite vulnerable right now. We're in the process of acquiring a needs and cost assessment with that, and we're... The potential cost could be anywhere between, for the entire redevelopment of it, about $10,000 to $12,000.
Do you anticipate needing that soon, or next budget here?
More likely than not sooner.
Okay.
And just recently, one of our... One of our two automatic defibrillators that we stock in the police cars is no longer in service and needs to be replaced. Speaking with Chief Workman, the new cost is about $2,000 to $2,500 per defibrillator and possibly $1,000 for a refurbished model. With that type of equipment, we prefer to have a new defibrillator based on the need for, you know, pre-hospital care and its importance. Oftentimes, we are the first on scene.
So, did you say two AEDs are needed?
We have two. We have two, one for each cruiser that's on patrol, and but one is inoperable.
These are... Are these full-on defibrillators, or are they more AED-type?
They're AEDs.
Yeah.
AED, yes.
Now, wouldn't you want to be consistent with the ambulance?
Absolutely.
Because if you arrive on the scene first, it's...
Yes, so the pads can hook right up to the ambulance. That's why we're working with Chief Workman.
Right, so it's important to have the same thing, yeah.
Exactly, yes.
Do you know what kind you have?
Medtronic.
I'm sorry?
Is it Medtronic?
Is it Medtronic?
It's not Medtronic, no. It's a...
Philips.
It's not Philips either.
The other brand.
I have no connection to that. I have no connection to any of them.
I can get the... I can certainly get it for you. I would.
This would be a nice...
Chief Workman, actually, Chief Workman had ours, and he's the one that researched the...
The same as the one that's out in the hallway there, the yellow one?
Field control?
No, it's not, no.
You didn't know you were gonna be questioned on this?
I know, I know.
I'm just wondering why we're talking about it. If there's anybody out there who wants to put a little donation together for people to donate, it'd be a great cause.
No, it wouldn't.
There are a lot of donations that come in for AEDs specifically.
Yes, yes, yeah.
So, if anybody's interested, please see Ed, and we can set something up.
Can I go back to your previous one about the problem with the building in terms of the duct work, I think?
Yes.
And other things? Would CPC funds be available for such a thing because of the historical building, or no? Questionable, okay. It's not really the building's structure, it's more the function? Is that why?
That's a great question. That would be fantastic.
Virginia Ahart, 27, Foma Road Chair of the Community Preservation. We are funding the study, and community preservation funds can be used for historic buildings. Part of that is keeping the historic facade, but it can be used to do work inside. Now, it cannot be used for simple repairs.
Okay.
There's the catch.
Okay.
It's restoration, not repair.
Okay.
Well, it sounds like we have a historical heating system.
I don't know about that.
Let's restore it.
I can second that for sure.
Any other...
No, thank you, Virginia.
Thank you. That's good.
On the personnel side, we are in a little bit of a shortage right now. The reason being, as far as full-time officers go, with Chief Goyette, his anticipated retirement. We also have a full-time officer that's working midnights. He's been tapped by the state police, and we'll be losing him as of the 1st of January. And we also... We're down one full-time officer currently who has transferred to the highway department. So, we're in the process now of recruitment, and we're just... In fact, interviews begin next week.
You're advertising for two.
We're advertising, yes. We're advertising for two, and we also have a shortage of part-time officers. And obviously, our part-time staff, you know, they really augment our full-time staff. We try to defray costs and overtime with the part-time officers. And we've had three officers who have all been given conditional offers of employment for full-time employment in other cities. One in Chickaby, one in South Hadley, and another in state police. So, with that being said, in order to maintain the same level of service, it may require some overtime, as well as some other expenses and wages, and fortunately, because we're on task, maybe even a little lower, it won't be so... It won't be so detrimental to the police department. As long as we get our... We recruit as soon as we can, and get the qualified people that we're asking for, and we can get them started right away. As far as the operations of the department, the incidence of crime right now is relatively low. We've actually had a great quarter as far as low incidence of crime. We've established a DART program. I'm not sure if any of you are... Have been made aware of that, or are aware of that? And the DART program is a drug addiction and recovery team, and this was spearheaded by the city of Northampton, who, through Hampshire Hope, acquired a grant, and they distribute the grant monies to any community that's willing to participate in this program with the theories behind the program. And essentially, it's to identify any people or persons within the community that have addictions, reach out to them. Our officers are trained. They reach out to them as not in law enforcement capacity, more as a resource to provide them with information and also give them the opportunity to have a recovery coach. And this is all paid for through the grant that the city of Northampton has acquired. And they're doing a great job. We've had two very successful stories relative to people in town that they have assisted and are now on their way to and path to recovery, so it's... They're doing very well. That's Marty Cook, Sergeant Cook, and Officer Dave Latour are both our DART officers, and they're doing a great job at it. And it requires some time. It requires them to go out. They have a phone that's been assigned to them through the program, and they get phone calls at all hours of the night, and they're willing to come out at all. We transport people to hospitals or to rehabilitation centers just to make sure that they get the needs, the resources that they need.
Does this grant also include giving Narcan out to all police departments?
It does. Yes, it does, which Southampton has as well. We carry it as officers, and we also distribute it to those that may need it.
Important.
Officer Scott Gove has been... He has been assigned the school resource officer, so Hampshire Regional has a part-time resource officer. Scott Gove is one of them. He's doing a fantastic job there. This, again, is being paid through grants through the Hampshire Regional, and it's a commitment, and he's going there two days, two hours a week, two hours a day, five days a week. So, he's committing quite a lot of time, short spans of time, travel time to Hampshire Regional and back for only two hours, and he's doing a fantastic job. He's... Through solicitation of donations, he's acquired 150 go buckets for the entire district for classrooms should there ever be a long-term lockdown, and that provides resources for facilities in case they need to go to the bathroom and other needs for that they can have in the classroom should it be locked down for long term. He's done a great job. He's solicited donations from Home Depot through some of the major, major stores like He also was assigned through the Hampshire Regional School Committee as the supervisor of attendance for Hampshire Regional, and that's for the entire district. And essentially, what he does is he follows up with incidences where kids are not going to school for whatever reason, and he follows up on it, visits the home, contacts the parents, finds out what the situation, reports it to the school. Community outreach, again, this is... Continues to grow. Our department Facebook page is, I think, an outstanding success for the department. It's provided resources for the community and also a platform for the citizens to reach out to us for inquiries, private messages, complaints about anything relative to speeding or just wanting to speak with an officer, maybe neighborhood disputes and so forth. So, it's been a great... Again, a great platform for the police department and the community. This year's stuff a cruiser event was a... Was just a complete success, and I attribute that to the people in this town, really, as well as the Lions Club. That was a collaborative effort between the Lions Club, Southampton Lions Club, and the police department, and we acquired over 700-plus toys for children.
Great.
Oh, wow.
It was an amazing success, and they continue to come in, so, you know.
Were you able to reach all the families with that?
We give that... That goes through the Lions Club. So, we're... We are that place where it's a drop-off. We advertise it, and one day we have stuffed a cruiser. That was this past Saturday, and the cruisers got stuffed. And... But they've been coming through for the last month. Certain business owners have dropped off toys, you know, families have dropped off toys. It's a... It's a really great program. They've done a... The Lions Club has done a great job with that, as well as Project Hope out of Westfield, which is an organization for veterans. They have donated a lot of toys for this drive.
Well, it's a positive spin on the police department.
It does, it does, yeah.
Nice thing.
Yes. Coffee with a Cop. We've had two events for Coffee with a Cop, and that's essentially just, again, it's just so... It's an outreach program where people can talk with us, you know, have a coffee, talk with us, and actually, you know, voice concerns, complaints, or just even just get to meet us sometimes, especially when, like for myself, I worked, you know, 20 years in the evening shift. Not everyone knows who you are, and it's nice to put a face with the name, so...
You get a lot of people showing up?
Uh, yeah, people do show up. Neither was the first event, was a little bit more, the second event, a little bit less, but, you know, people do show up, and they're there to talk. So, it is... It's... I see it continuing to grow. It's just gotta spread.
So, you're gonna plan it in the new year again?
Uh, we do it about every two months.
Every two months?
Yeah, yes. The National Drug Takeback Day, we acquired that day 41 pounds of prescription medication, which, again, is just a great, great program. Sand for Seniors, again, this year is... That's a collaborative effort between the District Attorney's Office, the Hampshire County Sheriff's Department, and the Council on Aging, as well as the police department, and our officers deliver buckets of sand provided by the highway department to seniors who request it. And they just, when they run out, they call, and we provide them with another bucket.
Great.
And the police department continues to do well-being checks for senior citizens during snow... Major snow events for those that sign up for the service. And what happens if there's any major snow event, the police department on every shift are required to stop at the house, check in with them, and make sure that they're doing okay, and nobody perhaps slipped in the ice or fell in the snow. Someone's checking on them. The communications, any questions relative to the police department? Are we gonna move on to that?
No, it sounds like, I mean, there's so many of these things that people don't hear about unless you come and report, so I think it's great that people hear about it.
Sure.
Small things, but important things.
It is, it is.
And to that effect, I think the Facebook page is excellent, getting a lot of us out.
It's been a success, for sure.
Yeah.
For sure.
You know, last year, we had actually requested a highway... A traffic study after the safe routes to school sidewalk was put in. The speed limit, I think, is 40 there, and so I think there was...
You're referring to Gun Road?
Actually, no, that's another issue. The one I was talking about was on Palmeroy, like right out in front of Coleman Farms.
JP to Coleman Farms, I think.
Yeah, JP's to Coleman... And we were just... There was a lot of concerned voice that it was a... Speed limit is pretty fast there for being such a busy area.
It is.
And I think there was a request into the state to do a traffic study, so you're sure about that?
I don't have an update on that. I can certainly find it out for you.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
The Communications Department, again, we're right on task. 48% expended in wages, and expenses, again, 48%. So, for this time of the year, we're right on task with that. As far as personnel, we had a full-time dispatcher that became injured, and she's on disability, and she's been on disability for about two and a half months, and based on the nature of the injury, it's certainly required. But one thing I want to note is that not once have we had to force a dispatcher to come in. They have collaborated amongst themselves as the dispatchers, as a unit, and worked every shift without complaint, and that's a... That's a lot. That's 40 hours a week that they had to fulfill, and it's not a large department, and not one dispatcher has complained, and they split the shifts up, rotated their shifts so they can make it work, so I just wanted to give a general shout-out to them for what they did.
That shows teamwork.
It does. As far as the operations of the Communications Department, we are now wireless direct. I don't know if anybody was aware of that, which that means is prior to the 911 system, we got a new 911 system the state did. It's called Next Generation 911. And prior to that, the... All cell phone calls west of 495 went to the state police barracks, their... The state police dispatchers. Now, towns had the option to sign up to get your own. Anything called within our jurisdiction goes directly to our PSAP, which is our Emergency Operations Center, and we elected to do that for two reasons. One, it's just a better service. There's no longer that middle person. We get that call direct, it automatically maps out in our dispatch center, so we know where they are, so that's... That information doesn't have to get transferred in case there is a break in transfer. Sometimes there is. State police dispatcher may answer the phone, person hangs up, and then, you know, there's that break of service, so then we have to research as to where they were. So, this service was elective. We elected to do it to make sure that we provide better services for the town. It also provides a stipend as a result of the extra service, so it provides a little bit more money for our budget.
That's great.
Along with wireless direct, we can now... Members of the community can now text 911. So, we can... Someone can enter 911 in their field of their phone, send a message, and it'll go directly to our dispatcher in a text message format.
So, that wireless 911, is that gonna be on your page, the police department page, explaining it, or...
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, that's important.
As well as the text, that has to go out. That... The text messaging just occurred this week.
Good, that's great.
There's some kinks that they're ironing out, but, you know, with this new system, they... It's something that they work out relatively quickly.
So, that prints out location, so you know, right, whether... Even if they're not talking?
Yes. It's not... The location, you know, is not specific. It's not, you know, it... There's a margin of error, and it depends, you know, on the phone, where the cell towers It's not, you know, it, there's, if there's a margin of error and it depends, you know, on the phone, where the cell towers are and so forth, but it does.
It gets you close.
It gets us close, exactly. I'll give an example of Wireless Direct. We had a lost hiker in the Wildlife Management Area over the summer who was in need of medical services. And our dispatcher received that call directly, mapped it out. And dispatcher Vine, as well as Sergeant Neal coordinated a rescue effort with the State Police who were able to take him out of the woods and get him immediate medical services. So it's just an example of that service and why we should get those, why, why we did what we did to get it directly.
Was that the activity on Strong Road by the?
Yes, that's where, that's where he was brought to the ambulance personnel. And that's essentially, you know, everything I have.
So all the rides are slow?
Right now, right, it's, you know, operationally, like I said, it's been, you know, low incidence of crime right now. But as far as administratively, you know, we have some, some tasks ahead of us to make sure we get our personnel back on track, which we will, I'm sure we will.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Before you go, because my wife happens to be a nurse, on that A E D, I'm serious about people wanna donate. So I'm gonna start with a five-hundred dollar donation for that A E D. I'll give it to Ed. So anybody out there who is interested in donating, hopefully we can make that twenty-five-hundred dollars up real quick.
Okay.
You guys deserve to have.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I wanna say, and I don't know, I can't, I don't know if I can pronounce it or I'm saying it, L A E T R A L perhaps?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a, yeah. I don't know how to pronounce it either, but that's a medical supply company.
I believe it's that. I don't know for sure, but for some reason that's ringing a bell.
Text it to Ed or email it to him or just.
That's what we have in the ambulance too, Richard, do you know? The A E D brand.
They have the same A E Ds in the ambulance?
The A E D brand, you know?
Okay, but you guys.
Yeah, yes, it's already been coordinated with, with Chief Workman.
Okay, great. Appreciate you coming.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Richard Fazoli, Deputy Chief from the Fire Department.
Hello, Rick Fazoli, Deputy Chief. Currently we are at run number six forty-eight for this year. Last year at this time, we were at five ninety-six, so we're fifty-two runs ahead. Current staffing, we have forty active members, twenty of which are paramedic, allowing us to staff at ALS, ALS level. Right now, we're looking to, we have two more medics coming on. One is from East Hampton Fire, one is from North Hampton Fire. We have a Southampton resident, he's a new E M T, so he's gonna be coming in. Equipment status, all our trucks are, and ambulances are in service, no repairs pending. Engine three, engine four, brush truck, A one and A two are at center station. Engine one is at the pond station on Bleemer Road. Mutual aid calls for this year from January first to today. Southampton requested mutual aid ninety-seven times. East Hampton was for eighty times. Primary transport thirty-six, intercepts forty, engine response four. Westfield was for eleven. Primary transport seven, intercepts three, engine response one. And in other agencies was North Hampton twice, Hoyoke, West Hampton, Barnes, and Montgomery each for once. Out of those, forty-three primary transports. Eleven were, Southampton was already out on a call. Twenty-three of them, we only had one person on duty, so, I mean, we can't transport one person. And in nine, there was no Southampton on the call.
Have we had mutual aid going the other direction?
Right, mutual aid for us, we responded forty-one times. Twenty-three to East Hampton, ten to Westfield, three to North Hampton, three to West Hampton, and two to Montgomery. Training, we do our training every Thursday night. We've been, it's been well-attended. We practice all aspects of firefighting skills as well as current EMS education. For recent events, we had a, at the new group home on College Highway on November twenty-sixth, a passerby called in a structure fire. It was called in at one forty-five P M. Engine three was on the scene at one forty-eight P M. They found a shed fully involved, ten feet from the main structure. The fire was quickly extinguished and controlled in fifteen minutes. The side of the house received damage to the siding, electrical box and windows due to radiant heat. Interior of the house was searched with thermal imager and no damage was found. This past Saturday, we held our annual Santa Claus visit. Approximately sixty children and their families were greeted by Santa and they all enjoyed snacks, cider, and donuts. Just as a reminder, burning season is coming up on January fifteenth to May first. Permits are ten dollars for the weekend and twenty-five for a season pass.
One fifteen to when?
January fifteenth to May first. The chief is spending the holiday up in Maine with family, so that's why I'm here.
I appreciate you coming out.
Thank you very much for coming.
Are there some new O C U S guidelines or standards in for physical fitness of firefighters?
That's, that's coming. It's nothing, nothing yet. I mean, all new firefighters have to take a physical to go to the academy. But other than that, right now, no.
Yeah, I was asking, cause some, like some gym-type equipment, because they sign the.
Right, we just, we just purchased some equipment in the station. They meet usually, they can, members can go in anytime, but they have training on Thursday nights before our fire training and then Sunday mornings.
Yeah, is that, I don't know that you would know, would that eventually be also required of the Police Department? I mean, I understand the need to have people in good physical condition for the kinds of work that you do.
I mean, it's available to the police if they wanna use it, yes.
Anything else?
Thank you for coming in.
Appreciate it. Okay, old business, Glendale Road, we're still waiting to hear from the grant. Fiscal nineteen budget and expenditure review.
And one thing on the Glendale Road, just so you know, I did talk to Mark Wensley today. And he said that the last they had told him about announcing for the grant, they had said just before Christmas. And he said, they're cutting it close. I said, well, the state said just before Christmas, that means Monday in my book. So if they stick to their, their timeline, I guess they'll make an announcement Monday. So we'll see.
Okay, thanks Ed. Twenty nineteen budget and expenditures review. Everybody receive that?
Yep.
Okay, who wants to take a first comment, Adam?
I mean, all building expenses are, are pretty much over. Across the board. I'm assuming that, is it, is it more expensive in the winter than it is in the summer? Do we know the answer to that? Like, would it, well, is this normal?
I don't know if we can answer.
It depends. You have to, you have to really look at each accountant. It's like for our account, the, the contracts are all, some of them are paid at the beginning of the year, some are paid quarterly. And then it just depends on what breaks. Going into this fiscal year, at least in this building, we knew we were gonna have to have one of the compressors, the relays fixed, which we did. And then as we went into the heating season, one of the boilers needed some parts and some repairs. So it varies.
Depending on the, the cost of the electrical and the, the heating, it's the best guess every year.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, I would say it's cost more to heat than cool, or I don't know.
I think some of these buildings normally have cooling.
And the updated equipment.
The only other glaring thing I see is software support on treasurer.
That's, that's usually prepaid.
Is it prepaid? Yeah, all of those are prepaid. So with that one, I remember that they had estimated what the increase would be on the support. And the increase was higher than what was anticipated.
It's worth checking with those contractors to see if they can actually give us that before budget season. It's always sort of after the fact.
It's, it's nice to see, as Lieutenant said, the, the police salaries and expenses and all that are, are right where they should be or, or a little lower, which is a difficult task and the years pass, it's, it's not always been that way.
Well, it sounds like he needs that for this year, cause he's gonna be running into some overtime now.
Right, but he's got a couple of, so, yeah. And the fire is looking good, except for their billing expense, but again, that's. It's good to see this on a regular basis, you know, we're almost six months into it, so it's holding, knock on wood.
Well, good job doing the supplemental taxes at, ahead two hundred and forty-five percent. I have a question though about the ambulance fees. This is on the revenue report. It says ambulance fees, revenue revisions. So that's not, that's just what comes in and goes out. It's not a budget item, so it says balance zero.
What page?
I'm on page five of the revenue report. It says ambulance fees, it says revenue revisions, estimated revenue. Actual revenue, they're all the same and then the balance, I mean, so that's not something that's, we're not budgeting that, right? It's just.
It has not been budgeted correct. That's the act, that would be the actuals.
If you look at the estimated revenue numbers, it's zero, yeah.
Yep, okay.
I have a question on where I might find, I mean, we're, we are self-insured for short-term disability is my understanding. So that when people go out for a period of time, they receive, what, seventy-five percent of their salary while they're out? And then we pay also, we have to hire someone, if we have the benefit of hiring someone to replace that individual on the job. Where would I see what, what that actually costs us year-to-date? And can we look at those numbers over the last couple of years to see, does it make more sense? And I think this has come up before.
It has.
You know, for us to buy some commercial short-term disability policy that would cover our employees so that they would get paid and we would have the budget resources to hire or replace them.
We, we, we pay them out of the standard budget, so we're not gonna be able to come up with a number.
So it comes out of the regular wage line.
Right. And they don't identify it separately. That's what makes it difficult. That's why when we were, we looked into this pretty extensively. I think it was around ten thousand dollars, we could have bought a, a policy that would have covered the employees. I think it was for seventy-five percent. But if they paid their share with after-tax money, then that benefit would be tax-free. So that would have been a much better situation for the employees. But, yeah, that, that didn't go forward, so it was, it's hard to compare. It's hard to justify when you don't have.
You don't know what A is to know what B would be.
Exactly.
Whether or not we spend more than the premium would cost us.
It's like, it's kinda like workman's comp. You don't know until you know. You don't know how many people are gonna be out at a particular time. We hope nobody is, of course, but there's accidents.
Ed, you've worked in a couple of towns. Were we unusual in being self-insured in that way? Were we different?
I've worked in one community where, yeah, you'd be different. And I've worked in two that actually had fairly similar policies. One, one was sixty-six percent and this one's seventy-five percent. I thought it was a little different when I looked at it. I think it's one heck of a benefit, but.
I have a question, I have a question about the expense report. Ed, on page seven. These are, these are like DARE grant, you know, it says here like four thousand nine hundred and forty-eight, something percent over. I mean, it's not a lot anyway, but in this case, is this just, is this, are these covered by other accounts?
Well, it also could be a reimbursable grant.
Okay.
Where you get the authorization, like the ten thousand nine hundred that you authorized me to sign for the stormwater. It's a reimbursable grant. So usually the accountant would enter it into the books as we spent, you might be in the negative. We'd have to send the reimbursements to the state and then we would get the money back to balance that off.
Yeah, but the budget amount though is actually quite lower than expended. So I would imagine that that budget amount would be what we expect to get reimbursed, right?
That comes, it says years previous balance.
Right.
Years' balance.
That's carried forward.
So it just brings it forward.
Carryover balance, yeah.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Which to me.
Can you, can you come up to the podium? Yeah.
Cause it says ninety-sixty-two and then almost five thousand.
Yep.
Relative to the DARE funds, that's funded by the P T O and we've actually have acquired that, that money. It's just has not been recorded yet.
Oh, okay, thanks.
It is there.
So it's reimbursed dollar for dollar, basically?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, thanks.
The money, the money is there, it just has not been recorded yet.
Okay, good.
We received the check.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So any other questions either on the expense or the revenue report that goes through twelve fifteen, eighteen? Hampshire Regional Budget and Expenditure Agreement Review, that is scheduled for a meeting sometime in the near future. I forget the date.
January third.
January third, okay.
Can I ask a question about that? We're having a select board meeting specifically about the schools and the budget. And I'm just wondering, the, the handout that we got has the Southampton share of the budget. And we don't know what percent that is exactly to the, like for all the different line items. Is there a way that that could be one of the columns? Cause it's really hard, for me, it's really hard to just see like a fraction of like all the different salary lines and department lines. It would be more informative for me to actually have that be as a column. I wonder if Bobby can do that, you know?
I can, I can ask. And I've already asked if she could do a percentage column of expended. And she originally said yes, but said it turns out to be a little bit more work, so we probably won't see that till after the beginning of the year. But I can ask about.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, generally speaking, I think we're about forty-two or forty-four percent of the budget is Southampton's obligation. And then I think central administration, we're like twenty-one percent because that's offset by the revenue that they get from the Worthington who has kind of a special school choice. Am I right?
Yes.
Couple of members here of this.
But it'd just be a lot easier to see the picture of the budget. We're just looking at a percentage of all the different lines. It just, it just makes it hard to really see the whole story.
I mean, I've gotta think that in order to pull out the figures that we have, she has to know the full amount. She has to know our percentage, so it's just an Excel spreadsheet you just add a column to. So we, maybe you can ask her, Ed, if we can get it for the January third meeting. That would be great. Any other questions on that one? East Street Bridge update, is there anything, Ed, or?
Yeah, we just got something.
Yeah, we got the proposal.
Yeah, I just wanted to give, give you, I did have the opportunity to finally have a lengthy conversation with Mass D O T about the item that Mike Rosenberg had brought up. Difference between falling into, you know, structurally deficient and still being usable and structurally deficient and being closed. And was there a prediction on, our, Easty Bridge is currently, I think it's at level fives in the three pertinent categories of.
That's true.
Of, you know, of how much time it might take or whatever to, for one of them to fall into structurally deficient and make us eligible for the state's small bridge program. And there are just a number of factors that we can't normally predict, probably can't rationally predict when that might happen. One of the things they did say is that without knowing which bridge Mike was actually specifically talking about, usually to close a bridge being structurally deficient, there's something else that's happened to it rather than normal wear and tear. Whether it's damage from, you know, a flood, an accident, or, or something else. So that's a real long shot and probably wouldn't happen for a, you know, long, long time. And, you know, for us, and, and actually they did say that it actually, under their new rules and regulations, falling to a four in any one of those three categories, not a three, is actually structurally deficient. And their, and their new terms rather than structurally deficient are poor. So, and, and talking with them with, with all the options, it's like, if you excuse the expression, it might be like walking into the crap table at MGM if we wanted to say, well, let's do some, you know, facial repairs to it or cosmetic repairs. And, you know, it could be two years, three years, four years before it actually, one of those categories falls into a four. Makes us eligible for the small bridge program. And then on the small bridge program, just because you fell into structurally deficient, doesn't guarantee you're gonna get money for it. There are, we're, we're current, that bridge is currently like number thirteen hundred on the state's list. So it would be a ways away.
I thought Peter Coquard had previously said that the bridge was too big for the small bridges project.
It is for that, but they, they do have other bridge, bridge programs we'd fall into if it did get into structurally deficiency. But like I say, it would take a number of years and then we wouldn't be at the front of the list either. So, you know, if we wanted to repair it, I've kind of come to the conclusion that probably our best bet, at least in my opinion, maybe to move forward with trying to get a local appropriation to close the, the gap or the, the balance from the million-dollar Mass Works Grant.
Yeah, I was under the impression, going to the, the N P O board meeting, meeting with, I think it was Tim, Pioneer Valley Planner, I thought he said it had to be down to a three before they considered.
And that's what he.
So is it four or?
It's, it's four, cause like, I had a. It's, it's four, because like, I had a lengthy talk with someone I know at Mass DOT yesterday, and he had the engineers on the, on the conference call, and yes, he confirmed that it's a four and not a three.
Okay, perfect. So we're closer.
Everybody drive over it. Any other questions on that? Okay, excuse me. Okay, new business. Patty Gambreini, Barnes Greatbrook Aquifer, new agreement presentation for a memo of agreement, which is a replacement of the Barnes Aquifer Protection Advisory Committee. Hi, Patty.
Patty Gambreini, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and I live in East Hampton. As you probably know, Southampton has been part of a group called the Barnes Aquifer Protection Advisory Committee since 1989, and the group was established to meet regularly and do different activities where four functions to help ensure protection of drinking water supply, shared. You know, the Barnes Aquifer extends all along the ridge lines here. It's a sand and gravel formation, it's a great place to draw water from, but it's also vulnerable. And so it's the towns of Southampton, East Hampton, Holyoke, and Westfield that came together in 1989. Well, in the past few years, we've been talking around the table at our meetings about how can we be more effective. There was a lot of, you know, most of our activities was just reviewing developments of regional impact, and those are development projects that are over Zone II areas in the different communities. And so we are essentially, most of our time was used doing that and not attending to some of the other functions the group had been organized around. Last spring, the solicitor in Westfield noted that the enabling legislation under which this group had been organized only enabled the group to be active in it for a 25-year period, and we'd exceeded that. So the group had its last meeting last June. The mayor of East Hampton, Mayor LaChapelle, hosted a roundtable in June for the communities to come together, and select woman Tishman was there, and as was Kurt Bojolay, one of your water commissioners. And the idea was to talk about what, you know, what people were thinking. We, you know, we did a little presentation reviewing what the group had done over the past 27, 28 years. And the two things that emerged was, one was the importance of having more information about water supply. There's, you know, the studies that have been done stop at the jurisdictional boundaries of the municipalities, and, you know, what, what's going on between surface and groundwater. So that was one of the things that came out of that meeting, that there was an interest in, like, could we find out more information about the dynamics of water supply? At the same time, some of the, you know, and, and this comes out of, some of the communities are under new regulations in the Water Management Act, Southampton being one, but Southwick and West Springfield also being in this formation, interested in potentially moving forward with us, whatever that is. And so under the Water Management Act, there are restrictions based on the amount of waters in nearby surface waters, on how much you can withdraw from your groundwater supply. So there's interest in better understanding that dynamic and what's going on. So that was one thing that was identified. The other thing was, how can this group maybe reconstitute and be more effective for the future? Maybe dispensing with that review of, of development projects and maybe working more collaboratively with local boards, providing technical assistance where there are new issues that boards are dealing with, like, you know, in the past 10 years, we'd seen many more projects with geothermal, and there are deep wells with that, and what are the materials they use? We've been able to produce some materials to guide local boards in thinking about that. And when we commented on projects that were geothermal projects, we did that. The same with solar projects, you know, what are the groundwater considerations for solar projects? So as things emerge, you know, we're capable of doing some of the research and, and bringing that to local boards. So you probably got the handout. There's some bullet points that sort of suggest some ideas that this group might do in the future going forward. And I think the first step is really to explore this through conversation with some local, you know, some of the folks working in the towns, maybe planning board members, conservation commission members, board of health members, water department folks, to just convene a series of, you know, two or three meetings and start to, you know, sort of flag some of the issues that the communities are struggling with or think would be great to work around, and come up with a proposal that we could then bring to the chief elected officials in each of the communities and then have reconvene as that sort of chief elected roundtable that Mayor LaChapelle hosted in June, to say, does this make sense? Where might we tweak this? And is a memorandum of agreement the best vehicle for moving forward? So sort of like trying to figure out what that is. One of the funding sources we identified to potentially pursue this work is a direct local technical assistance program, because it would have to cover some of PVPC staff time to help convene these meetings, you know, sort of facilitate everybody coming, taking notes. So I guess, you know, I have like two requests for your considerations. One is, you know, does that sound okay to you to commit municipal staff time to a series of two to three meetings to have these conversations that would then lead to some proposal for your consideration? And two, does it make sense for Southampton to put a request forward, since we're in like an open round of this direct local technical assistance right now, to put forward a request along those lines?
Now, two or three meetings over what period of time, do you think?
Yeah, probably over, you know, six to eight months. Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think we'd have any issue with, with that, Ed.
Well, the only thing is, if you look down on your agenda, there's DLT grant application discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Before this board, I would suggest, commits to anything, since we've also talked about doing a DLTA grant for the update of the open space, you, these are going to compete. One may get funded, one may not. They both might get funded, but I think it's important we have the discussion and identify what your number-one priority is going to be.
Is it for the same exact grant?
The DLT grants are, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are lots of, I think, lots of projects that we have.
We have.
That would apply, and we have to decide who, you know, which ones to submit.
Right.
Because of that competitive thing.
Right, you know, yeah, we could do an IT audit under the DLTA grant, and, and in my book with actually needing to do the open space and recreation update, you know, that IT analysis falls to number three in, in my particular book, but I don't get the vote, you do, so.
This would be.
Yeah. But, but, you know, like I say, those two applications may compete against each other, so.
But actually, committing to meetings isn't committing to doing a grant or anything.
Committing to the meetings is not.
It's informative, so.
No. But submitting for a grant for it would be.
And the likelihood that if we wouldn't submit a grant in that category, but the other towns who are members of this Bay Pac would, that would still put us in competition, correct?
Well, you can still submit two grants. I would just suggest that if we do that, that you give me the direction to submit, you know, one is the first priority and one is the second priority.
Will they allow that, us to prioritize our grants, or? And how much money is available total for these grants?
You know, I can't remember.
It was a couple, a couple million dollars.
No, no, no. This is, direct local technical assistance is money that comes from the state to the regional planning agencies to help move along different municipal activities. Planning for growth is one of the categories. And then categories are, then there's sort of local projects and then more regional services projects.
Right.
So, I mean, those, those kind of break out along those lines, too, so.
Yeah, I was trying to read, you know, I thought I read a number somewhere that they were making available statewide.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's probably a statewide number. It's not, yeah.
Okay, so, again, if we.
2.8.
2.8 million?
Okay, yeah.
Why don't we hear a little bit further on the agenda then about the other project, too?
Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Patty.
Okay, next, Erin Kuchar, Norris School Door Replacement Presentation.
Oh.
Do we have overheads and?
No, I sent you guys stuff.
We have the.
But if you wanted to see, I did one in color, so you could actually see what the door jams look and stuff like that. Do you want to?
You don't need that before.
It looks bad enough in black and white.
But just, that has the old amount on it, and it's actually less money than that because, I mean, it is just an estimate, but we were just trying to get an idea of what this would cost and what the, so basically what it was is, and I don't know, I mean, I only have the outlay of the, the Green Communities Grant for what we got, and, and I know, I got some of the information from how it was.
Second to the left page.
Of how it was presented, with Norris being one of the big users. But I can tell you that with, as you'll see, with the doors and what's going on, there's a ton of heat being lost outside of the doors, especially around the preschool area. So we had the head custodian, just with the doors that were in terrible, terrible disrepair that we've tried many times to fix and shellac and do whatever you do to it, and these were just terrible. So he kind of got an estimate, and of course, it would have to go out to bid like it would normally, but around $38,000 to fix the, the doors that are in the worst condition. And they, and it's really just replacing of those doors. It's, you know, he's going to keep the hardware we have and the rail that they have and all that sort of stuff. We can, it's just the replacement of the doors itself. But some of them are really horrible, and I think, you know, I mean, there's definitely energy, I don't know how you quantify it, but there's definitely energy being lost out of those doors every single day. So I don't know how it works from here, but I just feel like this is something that possibly could qualify for this pool of money that we have allocated to our town. So that was my.
Well, we probably have more things that we, that we need, and we probably don't have enough money for all the things that we need, so how are we creating a priority list for this?
It was a 130-something thousand dollar grant, and I believe Norris School was highly the driver of the.
Yes.
Brain need, right?
Yeah, when it was, when it was written up. I mean, I have the energy plan that was submitted.
What?
He's got a caller.
What?
And he's busy.
Who's he? John, you have to call on him.
Oh.
I just wanted to.
I'm looking at the proposal here, sorry.
I'm not going to take off the chairperson, so.
You're late.
Yes, would, is it eligible? Yes. What we will have to do is package up a project, send it to D O E R. We're actually going to have to definitively identify the amount of energy savings with those projects. They're going to have to approve it. I will say this, and in five years, to be eligible for more money, we have signed on to meet a 20 percent reduction in our energy use. Generally, to get to that, and shall we say, leverage the $138,000 original is, original grant, is you will take the low-hanging fruit, which also generates rebates and such, so that you get, you get more use out of your money. Right now.
You get more energy reduction.
You get more energy reduction. You're getting, you're getting the grant, plus you might be getting $10,000, $15,000 rebate from, whether it's Eversource or some energy company. Right now, the high rebates are in the lighting. They have looked at Norris School, and the number-one area for energy savings and the rebates is in the lighting at Norris School. So is this eligible? Yes. Does it meet those leveraging pieces that get, get you far along towards your 20 percent that you might want to grab in the beginning? Probably not. I mean, to me, this, if it, this would look like in perfect, or at least I'd submit it as a capital request also, as long as.
It's on the capital plan. I mean, I know what's on the capital plan. It was part of the, a number of capital requests that were put into capital, but I also know capital is about this big, so, and there's probably about this many requests. So I guess I, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I'm not trying to be, I get what you're saying, but like, lighting is the least of our problems at Norris. I understand what you're saying, but like, I could.
But it's, it's an energy-saving program, is what it is. They're trying to save the most energy. It's not necessarily what's your biggest need, because your biggest need might be the least of your energy savings.
But I don't understand how, how can you say, I mean, if you can feel air going out of your building, like, on a daily basis, how is that not an energy-saving? I mean, it's just.
Heat loss there.
It's heat loss everywhere.
It's heat loss, but it's not as much as these lights being on for 12, 14 hours a day.
The other thing, too.
Do they have any LED lights in Norris?
No, that would be what they would be upgrading to.
I don't think we.
And there's nobody who assesses that?
Oh, there is.
Oh, I'm sure there is. They have things.
With all of these, whether, and the lighting's already been assessed, because that was part of the application, and it was at the forefront of the request that got us the grant. But if we were to go in this direction, then we'd need to hire an engineering company to do the analysis on what the energy savings would be on this particular project.
Right, right.
Or if we wanted to do, you know, an HVAC project, whether it would be in Norris School, this, this building, the highway garage, or whatever, same thing. We'd have to hire an energy, energy engineering group that would say, okay, here's what you're spending. If you put this particular system in, here's what your savings are.
Is that, would that grant be covered? Would that be covered in the grant?
Some of it you can, it's a grant you can use to do those things.
We also going to insulate part of this building, right?
Yes.
Right. Do you think that the, the other thing, too, is we've got new boilers there, so some of that heat savings might be somewhat.
No, they weren't, they weren't, it's not like we put in high-efficiency boilers. I mean, we.
They weren't, we weren't, we just fixed what was there.
No, we couldn't, that was like.
They rebuilt, they rebuilt what was there.
Yeah, that was a $300,000 expense, so.
Yeah.
I mean, we just fixed a problem to continue to have heat in the building, but.
The other thing that might be an opportunity here is, with these doors, is adding security to the school.
Oh, well, that would be fabulous, but I, I agree, but I.
So the commitment here is, you said we, for five years, we would have to show, demonstrate, we'd have to save.
We're going to show 20 percent.
We have to show.
20 percent every year.
Energy, no, no, we got, we got to get to 20 percent in that five years. Exactly.
Projects that equal.
So this then obviously is never going to make that list if it, I mean.
I guess, I mean, I don't know how you.
It, it may, but generally, projects like this, doors, windows, usually fall at the end of the list because they actually have the least amount of energy savings to them.
Is there any money in the school budget that you can use to allocate? I mean.
We just got hit with $75,000 in sped costs by the end of the year. So no.
I mean, I'm looking at the preschool front entrance. I mean, that's so corroded and everything.
Oh.
It's actually a safety issue for the young kids.
Right, yes.
You know?
Yeah, that one looks the worst.
Yeah, that's been, that's where you walk by and you can completely feel all of, all of it coming in.
That's only 5,100, but, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess you'll see on January 2nd, but we've had a lot of expenditures that have not been in the budget that we've been absorbing relating to school facilities, so. I, I guess, I mean, I, I guess I have a, I understand what you're saying, but I also have a frustration because I feel like we're sitting on this money that we've been sitting on since October or whatever it was. And how do we start to spend it and improve, improve our town facilities and, and look at things like this and, and not be able to do it when, I don't know.
I was just going to ask that. It doesn't seem like we've spent any of this money, but we've had it for a while.
Well, we have to do the study first to see the energy savings before we.
Right, that's where, that's where the process of now, he's pretty much complete, most of all of the first round is going to go into the Norris School, into the lights, and he wanted to go back and actually take a look at the, the emergency lighting there because he thought there might be an opportunity to add that on. So we're pretty, we're pretty well finished with that.
And they still have the rebates. That's where, there's a big rebate.
Right, and they, and they just.
A lot of that money's going to come back.
They just rolled it out to begin in December, so that's why he wanted to go after the lighting.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Think of any way we can get a door or two done, the most, the worst corroded.
Capital.
Worst door.
Yeah.
Capital Committee.
Yeah, capital.
You could get some, and then still you could go after that, yeah.
Think of any way we can get a door or two done, the most, the worst corroded?
Worst door.
Yeah.
Capital Committee.
Yeah, capital.
You could get some and then still you could go after that, yeah.
And if we do... If the capital committee does fund a couple of the worst doors, does that help us with the energy saving as well? So even though we're spending money over there, it will add some sort of percentage of savings for that.
Well, actually, what I'd probably really like to see out of them is what all their capital requests are at this point, because I'm still one that says, okay, maybe the needs are there. Maybe we look at grouping a number of these together and actually do a borrowing to do a few of them rather than looking at the expense side, so.
Are these in priority order of...
We sent a capital, we sent a capital improvement plan like a couple of months ago that had high, medium, and low.
Okay.
Doors were on it?
Yeah, and the doors were on it, yes. These are the most, I mean, you, these, these, these aren't, there's a lot more doors to the school. These are the most, these are the most, yes.
But the way they're presented, if you...
Oh, I don't know if they're in, no, I would say obviously...
Hierarchy of need.
The preschool one is obviously the worst and I don't think they're in, they're not in priority need, I don't think.
It's the least expensive ones.
Well, there are a couple for fifty-one hundred.
Yeah. I mean, we right now have an eleven thousand dollar leak in the roof, so, um, that came up today, so.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Tomorrow.
I know, so, uh, I don't...
Probably not, markets on it.
Will they close?
Anyway, um, I guess this was a presentation, I guess you do what you decide to do with it. Um, we're happy to come to capital, I haven't heard anything about when the capital is meeting.
Just talking about it, because he's the representative to capital and I think it might be...
We don't have one scheduled.
You don't have one.
We have a town meeting scheduled.
I think we should. I think it's starting to get, get close to time where we...
So he's going to schedule one and see what they can do.
Let us know, I mean, we'll definitely come.
Thanks, Erin.
Thanks, Erin.
Thank you.
Interim Police Chief Appointment. Uh, current police chief, Mike Goyette, is leaving at the end of this month. He is retiring and we posted an interim police chief position, uh, and we had one person apply for that. Which is Lieutenant Illingsworth. And we received some letters of recommendation. So Ed, uh, how do we handle this from here?
It's your appointment, uh, it was posted internally for the required amount of time.
Posting and everything went okay?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
Mister Illingsworth, Lieutenant Illingsworth, was the only one that applied for it.
And this is interim until we post for a permanent police chief?
Oh, until you hire a new.
Right. Post and hire a new police chief. And we got to decide if we want to look at the job description and all that goes with it. But, uh, remember last time I was on the board when we needed a new police chief when David Silvernell left? And Lieutenant Illingsworth was one of the applicants and I know from my point of view, it was a real tough decision between the two of them. Uh, and back then I, I talked to a number of officers who gave me their opinion and they were very high opinions of Lieutenant Illingsworth, so. And I believe, have, have you talked to anybody else in the interim that you want to bring up?
I'll make a motion to approve, um, Illingsworth as our interim temporary, um, fire, uh, police chief. And the references are outstanding and we're fortunate to have such a qualified, educated, dedicated, um, member in our own force.
Second.
Okay, discussion here now.
No, I mean, I think it's a... No, I absolutely support this. Very easy decision. Yeah, this is...
So we, we can do this, we need to discuss interim salary and all that too, but, uh, we can do that after the appointment with Lieutenant?
Yeah, and then I've got, I've...
We have an executive session?
There's, there's an executive session.
Right, we can discuss it, okay.
You can discuss that, and...
So we have a motion, we have a second, no discussion, additional discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
So I guess Lieutenant, you'd have to accept it in order for this to be official. You want to come up here and...
Oh, now the bad news.
Thank you, I appreciate your support.
Yeah, thank you.
So we'll, uh, we're going to have an executive session later on in the agenda. I don't know if you're going to hang out or if he wants to give you a call.
Go out.
Can I hang out? Okay, great. That was the easiest thing on the agenda. Fiscal twenty-twenty budget direction.
Yes, I mean, sure, we'll be sending out the memo for, uh, the budget requests, so...
To all the department heads?
To all the department heads and the boards and committees, so, um, the board, if they wish to, should give us some general di- direction as to what goes into that buzzet, budget message to, uh, you know, as far as if you are going to recommend a certain percentage of salary increases, if you are going to recommend that budgets be level funded or limited to a certain amount of growth for the next fiscal year. Uh, if you've got any particular goals or areas that you, uh, want to identify, uh...
Well...
In the budget to, you know, improve upon or increase.
Yeah, I don't know if people are ready to talk about this here now, or you want to think about it and wait for the next meeting, but if somebody has some thoughts, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, a, a number of years ago, the Finance Committee had recommended a zero-based budgeting process and somehow that never happened. We keep getting a budget with more money added to the same categories over and over, rather than looking at each budget from zero and building a new one each year and to see where you might shift some resources, where you might save. Is it worth the exercise, in your opinion?
Starting from a zero-based budget is time consuming and a long process.
Mm-hmm. But if you get to a place where you're, you know, you're building a budget that's really realistic for today's years, you're not just filling in the lines in the budget and carrying it forward year after year.
Growth figure to existing...
Pardon?
And adding a growth figure to existing...
Well, yeah, I mean, put the money where, yeah, where it should be. I mean, some things you might not have to do next year, you might have to do them in two years. So you knock that out and you use the money in, in that year for another purpose. That, I mean, it just kind of makes it a more, in my mind anyway, a more responsive, um, to changing situations rather than sitting there with the same budget and then having literally the rain come in through the roof and, you know, not, not address some of the major problems at the expense of some other things for a while, but, but moving ahead so that you could start to chip away at what are chronic issues that we have.
Or you could just ask for more detail of the breakdown of...
Yeah, but I think you need to have people think that they have to figure out a way of shifting resources. And, and the best thinking comes from the people who have the responsibility, um, rather than us imposing something on them. I, I, in, I think, if they have responsibility for managing the budget throughout the year, I think really having them have the opportunity to be maybe a little more creative in their thinking. I'm not saying we're going to save tons of money, I'm just saying we've kind of shifted around a little bit.
I, I've had the experience of doing zero-based budgeting before and I have to say that I, it's, it's an incredible exercise. It is incredibly time consuming. You're basically starting every single department and you're starting with a zero. You're doing benchmarking against state, national, local, uh, salaries and expenses and so you're not looking at what was, you're looking at comparison. That's the kind of thing that would have to be a contracted service. I mean, to, I mean, I think, I mean, I think it's a great thing to do, but, I mean, that would be fairly overwhelming to do in the next three months before.
Have that ready for town meeting would be a stretch, I think.
Well, let me jump in.
Maybe long term, maybe the following year we get something on board with that, I don't know.
But I think there might be a step in between, like Ed was just saying, in terms of, uh, more detailed and oversight. I mean, we had a interim town administrator last year who was three days a week and now we have given Ed this CFO responsibility and so I think there probably is some middle ground.
Well, let me, let me give my experience of middle ground. Uh, I agree, zero-based budget makes a lot of sense, but the middle ground is in, we have, uh, the interim police chief here. I think I'm the first one to say that, right? But when he does his budget, for instance, he knows, assuming, I'm making assumptions here, Chief, that he needs two officers on every shift, plus he needs a sergeant and, say, a lieutenant on the other shift. So he doesn't have to justify that, that's, that's a salary base, that's X amount of dollars. He just has to relook at the other line items. Do I need this software, uh, update this year? If I don't, I don't put it in there. Do I need this line? So I think in between, you, you don't do zero base, but you don't just tack on five percent to the top of it. You know, you got to go back and explain why you need it. And if for some reason he needs an additional police officer, he needs to come in and explain why. So, uh, to me, in between the two, we can get more detail, I think, is what you were looking for and still get what you're looking for. Have people look into it and really give a lot of thought into, I needed that last year, do I need it this year? Or do I need more this year? So I think that's it.
That's a good idea, I mean, it, I think it's, it's going to take some time.
Yeah, but, but the thing is that they're, they're responsible for running their budget. And this is the first year, I think, that we've really made it clear that this is the money you've got and you've got to manage it. And again, using the police department as an example, they've done just that, where the last years, you know, it fluctuates back and forth, but, you know, I think they're managing it very tight this year, as the other departments are. So I think it's a great exercise that you have to put them through.
Well, Anne, your previous, your, your working budget for this year should, should help you decide what things are important. I mean, we can obviously see the building expenses are creeping up, so that should probably be weighted more importantly than some other things.
It doesn't necessarily encourage people to think about doing things differently.
Right.
And I think that's what zero-based budgeting affords you the opportunity. Yeah, you got to research how other places do it and, and in doing that, you may come up with something. I mean, that's the only thing I'm, you know, those are the kinds of things I'm talking about, because we're not going to have appreciably more money. So, and we know the costs go up, so we still have to figure out how we're going to manage within our means. And this was just a thought I had about getting the input of people who know it better than, than us sitting up here, because they're working with those, those issues and those numbers every day.
Well, I mean, maybe the middle ground is, is that, I mean, we're not going to have appreciably more money. I mean, I think we all know that from previous budget years and the experience that we had. So, I mean, zero-based budgeting is obviously the goal, but if, if, if the middle ground is, is look, you can't have your budget go up that much, so you really have to dig into what your priorities are and you have to figure out a way to shift money around in the most efficient way possible to maximize the resources that you have and the service that you're providing.
But looking maybe at doing things differently to, to accomplish the same thing. And I think that's what it facilitates, it just kind of, in my mind.
So maybe that's, that's the edict, Francine, is that Ed gives the department heads is that you need to look at things differently and come up with new ideas, new creative ways to do things and let them come back to us with those the first round and see what they come up with. Because you're absolutely right, I mean, if they're just adding a percentage on, they're not really thinking through the process.
Yeah, they can't, we can't do that.
Right, right.
And I don't, I don't think we should say, put X amount of percentage in for salary increases. That should be something after we look at everything, we decide overall what the, everybody gets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those are negotiated.
Yeah. So I, I guess...
Well, I mean, it's pretty much level funding with maybe a, maybe a wish list or, or ideas on how you're going to, you know, it, you know, so it's, it's the wish list of what you'd like to have and then your plan for funding it, uh, in a level funded situation.
Well, level funded versus level service, we got to be careful on those two, you know? Yeah, but we should look at both of them.
Mm-hmm.
Does that give you enough, Ed, to talk to? Are you going to have the same makeup of the finance team this year as in the past? I know you were new last year and things were changing, or...
Yeah, I don't see that changing.
Okay. Anything else on that? Did we give you enough confusion or...
Yeah, I think I can handle it from in there and that's some of the things that we had done in, in some of the other places I worked too, is, you know, specifically on, we did not give, when, in my last position, we did not give the department heads the, uh, piece or the authority to just, you know, plug in X amount of, uh, salary increases. We said that we would let them know what that would, would be and then that they could tell us what that figure was at a later date.
Okay. And, and I guess, just thinking about it, if there's some way that a department, I don't know, a highway department comes to us and says, hey, you know, we've been doing this the same way, but if we do this, it'll save the town thirty thousand dollars, I'd like to try it for the next fiscal year. Now, we encourage them to do that and don't penalize them the next fiscal year if the experiment doesn't work out, you know what I mean? Because sometimes people want to take chances because they'll figure they'll get stuck.
Yeah, exactly.
So I think we need to encourage that, yeah. Okay. Anything else on that? Okay, COA tax bill stuffers request. We're looking for stuffers, Ed?
Yes, stuffers, yes, uh, in your packet you should have a double-sided page of, uh, that the COA is requesting to add to the tax bills. Uh, most, most of it is COA news, but there is also a piece on the top of that first page, uh, just reminding people that, uh, they also can pay their tax bills, uh, online, so they don't need to come in directly into the office if they want to choose that, uh, that option.
Renee, you're on the COA, is that anything you wanted to say, or...
Um, no, actually, I think the idea that they can pay online is great and I think that, uh, recently The Friends has applied for a 501(c)(3) charitable organization and there are new rules relative to that, which mean that they have to elect seven people, which is more than usual, so they're really trying to encourage more people to come. Also, if you're, I think it's fifty-five, do you know, Afian? It helps the senior center a lot if people register to be, uh, in the senior center and there's also a card you can scan. It helps with grants to have higher numbers of people represented. So I think they're just trying to look for more people to be involved and also to be on this board, so I think it's a great idea. My question is, they're also, are they also sending out the January calendar?
It's on the back side.
It's on the back.
It's on the back side, okay, all right, all right.
Yeah. Okay.
No, I think it's nice to see collaboration between departments because there's cost savings.
Right.
You know, one's paying for printing and the other one's paying for postage, that, that works. And they're getting...
Yep.
Okay.
So you're going to make a motion? Do we have to approve this?
I move to approve the, whatever we called it, the stuffer?
Stuffer, stocking, envelope stuffer.
Envelope stuffer.
A motion on this, or this is just a request to have people?
No, my understanding is that for anything to be inserted into the tax bills, that the Board of Selectmen has to authorize it, which would be a vote.
Okay.
It doesn't add to postage, right?
No, this would not add to the postage.
Okay.
No.
So Francine made a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Thank you.
Start stuffing.
Okay, Town Hall closing time, December twenty-fourth and December thirty-first discussion. So I'm assuming you mean closing early on this?
Yes, the, uh, the staff has come to me and, uh, let me know that in, in the past, uh, it's, has been a decision that has been made, whether to or not to, on a, a yearly basis decision, and it's not a, uh, a standard, standing rule or, or, or policy. So, um, they asked if the, uh, Board would take it up, discuss it and maybe vote on it. Uh, my understanding is that, uh, at least from talking to some of them, is that Christmas Eve is probably the, uh, bigger day of the two of them, but, uh, I wanted to get it before, before the Board for both dates, so you could talk about it and make any decision you might make.
I understand, because it's your first year that they try to convince you that ten AM closing was normal?
Actually, I think they were actually going for like an eight forty-five, but... But yeah, I did, I did a bit of history and just being the new person and do, sampling some stories of, okay, has it closed early before? What's, you know, uh, what's been, well, you know, what's been the practice? And like I say, I've, I've found out that it has varied from year to year. My understanding is when it's been done, it's probably, uh, been done for like one o'clock in the afternoon, so.
I know at our place it's three o'clock, but I don't know.
Our place is three o'clock.
Sure.
With all call coverage after that. And there are, um, implications to Town Hall closer, closing regarding other departments, correct?
Well, you've got other buildings and whatever, like the library and the highway, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So what's your thoughts, Francine, Jim?
I have no problem with closing.
Well...
I, I know you both said you close at three o'clock. What are your hours normally? I mean, you close at five normally, five thirty?
Normally five for me.
Uh, four thirty.
Okay, so it's like an hour. And we, we close at four thirty. Four?
Four usually.
Okay, well, four.
I think one o'clock's reasonable, if that's what they've done, and, uh, I have no problem with that. More for a couple hours, too.
If that's the case, we need a motion, just put it on record.
I'll make a motion.
I think three o'clock.
What's the motion?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, close at one o'clock, December twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, and thirty-first in two thousand eighteen. I think that's too early.
I'll second.
Okay, just for...
The Town Hall.
I would say just for the record, this is just for this year and we'll do it every year.
Yeah, that's why I said the year.
Can I ask a question? Is there school on the twenty-fourth? There's no school on the twenty-fourth either?
There's no school on the twenty-fourth, either school?
They have a half day tomorrow, and that's it. Right? School has a half day tomorrow?
Tomorrow, yeah.
Probably.
And then they start their.
So.
I'm more for like a two o'clock.
Are there implications about when town halls close relative to other employees in terms of that contract?
Well, that's what we were just talking about.
It says weather event.
It has to say weather event?
It's gotta be a weather event.
It's not just regular town hall closing?
So the question is, what, what about the highway department? What about the library?
It is a weather event, okay, weather event.
Yeah. But.
They will, yeah, they would probably mirror us.
They would, okay.
Yeah.
The other issue, obviously, we have police department, which is twenty-four seven, so.
Right. Same with the fire, fire EMS.
Fire, yeah. So, well, I mean, I, I, I agree with you, so.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
I'm, I'm all for closing earlier. I, I would be more in support of a two PM closure, which is about two and a half hours early.
That's two hours. It closes at four normally.
Four o'clock.
Yep. If, if two o'clock works, I, I mean.
Well, it's at least in the middle.
So with that in mind, let's take a vote on this. If it doesn't pass, we'll get another motion. So the motion right now is close at one o'clock with a second.
Who was the second in this?
Francine.
I was.
Okay, Francine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed.
Yeah, I'll go with the opposed, so, okay. So it doesn't pass, another motion?
I'll amend my motion to two o'clock.
Well, no, we, we didn't. It's already been turned down, so if you wanna make another motion.
I'll make a, I'll make a, another motion, that we close on the twenty-fourth this year and the thirty-first of December this year at two o'clock.
I second that.
Discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there we go.
Very good, thank you.
That, that excludes the TA.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Exactly, yep.
You're staying all night.
Okay.
I'm not usually out of here at closing times, so.
DLTA grant application discussion, which ties into the aquifer discussion. Ed, you wanna continue that?
Sure. You know, there, there are a number of items that we could apply for. The number, at, at least it seems like the number one that's been talked about for a while is open space and recreation update. And Marla did find another organization that does do that. The one piece of that puzzle, might wanna keep that in our back pockets, because if we wanted to use an outside organization, we would not be able to use the DLTA grant if we were awarded the DLTA grant.
It's only PVPC that.
Well, that's, that's basically what the state's giving these regional planning agencies to help staff them. So it's, it's basically available to those regional planning agencies rather than paying outs, outside organizations.
What was the quote? We got fourteen thousand for PVPC?
Yes, I believe that's what it was.
So if the grant is much less than that, and the other person is much less than that, it might, it might work. So we could keep that on the back burner, maybe?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking of, keep the other one on the back burner, like if we don't get it or, or what have you. And then, you know, like I say, you could use it for an IT audit, but that's kind of dropped to the bottom of my list. And then, you know, you can also put in a DLT, TA request for, you know, the, the work to regenerate that BayPAC group. And, and it may, they may not compete, because if that other one is on a regional basis versus an individual basis, and still we can put on them, this is our number one request, this is our, our number two. But like I say, that's, as the board of selectmen, these DT, DLTA grants are supposed to come through you. It's supposed to be your decisions to apply for them, so.
What's the grant cycle?
Uh, it's open now, it closes at, I think it's like.
January eleventh.
Yeah, I was gonna say two weeks, so, you know, i- if you want me to, you know, put in for, you know, one, two, whatever, just in what your priorities are, just let me know.
Because I, I, I would like to get this to the master planning, master plan implementation committee, because, I mean, we've been talking about, and that's one of the categories in here that they mentioned. How are we making this available to, to other committees who might want to come forward with an idea, so that ultimately, I guess we would make the, or you would make the decision about which ones are submitted.
Right.
But.
We have to.
Well, I'm not making the.
We have to have an updated open space plan in order to be eligible for other grants, and the deadline for that is the end of this fiscal year. So this January eleventh, um, grant deadline, when's the award?
I didn't see any information about when.
I believe it's usually like in February.
Oh, so it's pretty quick turnaround.
It's pretty, it's pretty quick turnaround, yeah.
Okay.
So.
So what you're saying is if we get the open space, we do the open space because other grants are contingent on us having an open space plan?
Like, we wouldn't have been able to be in, in the running for this Glendale Road grant if we didn't have an open space plan.
Okay.
Right, a lot of the grants that you'll see, like, that fall into those categories are, yeah, specific, is when's the last time you opened space?
Then that, that takes precedent over other things.
But the regional water, I mean, it, it would be great to have it be regional. That's more in fitting to what she was just saying than to Southampton, just to have it by itself.
Oh, makes perfect sense. No doubt about it.
Can we do both, then, like you suggested?
If that's, that's your direction, yeah. And I'll just put, you know, priority one on the open space, priority two on, you know, the, the, the water aquifer group. And like I say, because one's regional and one's individual, they may not necessarily compete, so.
Well, let me ask a question. By us designating them as one and two, will they look at them differently? Like, oh, okay, number one, that's what they want, that's what we're gonna give it. But if we put them both in without priorities, they may look at both of them and fund them both of them.
Well, no, they might also say, wow, every other town has applied for this regional grant. This is a high demand. Let's not do the other one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what's your pleasure? Put them both on there, it sounds like. And do we wanna prioritize them, or do you want not?
Is it a lengthy grant application, Ed? Is this a problem? Because the eleventh of January is right around the corner.
It's not a real.
It's not, yeah, okay.
Lengthy, no.
I'll make a motion then to indicate that we're interested in both the open space plan update, and it's just an update, and also as priority and secondary would be the regional water protection. I'm not sure if I'm saying that right, the water protection priority?
I understand.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Any more discussion on that?
The reinvention of BayPAC.
Right.
Right, basically.
Is what I agree with her to it as, yeah.
And, and according to this, whatever project, if you win the award, it has to be completed by December thirty-first of two thousand nineteen.
Any more discussion?
Not on that. I just, it was a, I just wanted to mention, one of the other things she said was about having convening. I mean, Ed, I mean, you have regular department head meetings, right? I mean, is there any opportunity to bring together the people that she had suggested? At any point?
I mean, it's the same thing that we, same type of thing that we did with the, the stormwater.
Right.
Grant. So, yeah, we should be able to bring together the individuals or the groups that they are looking for.
Okay.
Okay, so let's get this motion off the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Who made the motion?
Who's second?
Second here.
Okay, thank you.
I made, yeah.
Okay, Southampton Greenway Bike Path update.
Well, this, this came up at the Conservation Commission meeting earlier. There was just a question about where things were at. There was a discussion about some history on that relative to grants, and there was just a question, and it hadn't been brought up at all about where things are at. So I thought I would just ask that it be on the agenda.
And basically, you, you've got, I was finally, excuse me, able to get confirmation that it did remain in the environmental bond bill.
Okay.
That the governor had not vetoed out that section. You've, you've got the wording. I am somewhat concerned about the wording, because where we're at right now is, our next step is really, we need funding to actually purchase the right-of-way. But it'll probably cost about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I don't know if the wording in that environmental bill will allow us to do that or not, but I actually got this information through Representative Seibex's office, and they recommended that, once our new representative takes office, that we contact them and ask them to lobby the governor to release that funding, and, and probably specifically ask the question of, okay, can some of this funding be used to purchase the right-of-way?
So you have that on your agenda for after the first of the year?
Yes, I do.
Great.
Yeah, because right now it's.
And it'll also, also help if certain, if some or all of the members of the select board will contact that representative also, but I will be the first to do that.
I'll be happy to do that. So is there a particular, what's the earmark title?
It's the environmental bond bill. It's, if it's not on there, I will, and I may not have put it on there. I think it's number forty-five eighty-three, but I will confirm that. And the account number or the line number is, it's on the second.
Okay.
Yeah, it's at the top of the first page. Our wording is.
Twenty-eight ninety dash.
Yeah, exactly.
Can you send us the contact information? And we'll all reach out?
Sure, absolutely.
Great. Okay, anything else on that? Any other necessary business?
Yeah, but, excuse me, what if we can't get the language changed and it's limited to construction?
Well, there's two pieces of the puzzle. It's leave it, limited to construction, we're still.
We're still behind the envelope.
Yeah.
Exactly. And, and the other piece of the puzzle is, just because this is in that bond bill does not necessarily, even if we could use some for construction, some for purchase, does not necessarily mean that the governor will actually agree to release that portion. So there's a couple of items that are there. But in the first, might as well start down the road.
Yep. Okay, any other necessary business that can't wait to January eighth, regular select board meeting? Anybody have anything?
Nope.
I've got one item. Came out of the safety complex meeting earlier. Ed, would you mind contacting Don Humison? There's a million dollar grant for the design of the safety complex. And the understanding I got, it was approved as a line item on the fiscal nineteen budget, and we need to know if it passed the House and the Senate. And if it did, did the governor sign to release the dollars?
Okay, I thought that was a, actually, a, a different bond bill rather than part of the budget, but I will see what I can find out for, on it.
Yeah, supposedly there was a line item in the budget for this year, so if you can find out and give us an update?
I thought it was in the economic development bond bill, but.
Okay, if that information was incorrect, but, but us not.
I, I know the general area it'll look, so.
Okay.
I'll figure it out for you.
Yeah, because if we can get that, and then the land donation goes through, we're well on our way to hiring a contractor for the safety complex.
Could I ask, I wasn't sure if it was on this agenda or a previous one, but you had given us a list of potential articles for the warrant for the town meeting in February?
It's on here.
Okay, so that's, okay, you already said it, yeah.
Yeah, I figured, I figured I'd start building that.
Okay.
Page twelve of the agenda.
Yep.
Seems that way, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, now on to signatures, personal change forms, PCFs. We have a PCF, emergency administrative assistant to the town administrator, part-time, non-benefited, Judith Zadonis. Uh, we have a, another PCF, emergency temporary van driver, part-time, non-benefited, COA, David Bida. Third PCF, part-time, Catherine Workman, EMT, fire slash EMS department. Those are the three.
Wanna break that last one out?
Yeah. Again, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the two PCFs, administrative assistant and emergency temporary van driver, pending approval by PQB and Finance.
It has been approved by PPBB tonight. It has not gone to Finance, so.
But Finance hasn't, correct?
Correct.
I'll second for those two.
Okay, so just bringing it up, do we want to do that, since we don't normally do that? We wait for all the signatures? Kind of a change in how we do things.
I think we have done it on sort of emergency.
On the emergency ones, yeah.
Both of these are emergency. One of them, the van driver is replacing somebody who is out medically, so.
So the caveat is they're emergency, so we're gonna.
I'm uncomfortable with what you just said, not, not doing it until it's Finance signs off.
Okay, so we gotta.
I'm, I'm in, since we're having a discussion.
No, no, that's why I brought it up. Now, emergency, what happens if we don't approve the emergency for the van driver, for instance?
Then it would affect the schedule for rides for seniors.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's got a critical.
There's no transportation for the seniors, yep.
And the temporary is only, what, twelve days, or?
Twelve weeks.
Twelve weeks, I mean, yeah.
Twelve weeks. Now, why don't we have the, the regular PCF, not just an emergency? We usually get both together.
I just, I just did.
I mean, these are listed as emergency, just to be clear.
Yeah, I just wanted to dot the i's and cross the t's. I mean, I have been told by some that actually emergencies, once they're signed by PPBB, is basically, that's all it needs, but not having gone through this before, I was, I was a little more interested, especially with these two, of making sure that all the i's were dotted and t's crossed as, as expeditiously as possible.
Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second.
And a second, yeah.
To approve these two, which are emergency only.
Are you okay with that?
Because we're emergency.
Pending Finance, or no?
Well, it's, it's pending Finance. My worry is the COA temporary dr, uh, van driver, because if we put the seniors out without a van driver, it's gonna.
I'm assuming they've had a Cory, and it's within budget and all the other things, right?
And I guess the, the other question is, when is Finance meeting?
Not till the seventh.
Yeah.
I mean, the issue, especially with the, the van driver, is, what brought this up is the fact that, okay, he's really not gonna start doing the physical van driving until January, when the person goes in for the surgery. However.
He's to be trained.
FRTA has to train the van driver, and that had to start this week.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so it's not normal for us, but it sounds like this is a true emergency, if you will, to get this person up and going before the other one goes out. So the key is, do we wanna make an exception? So let me ask you another question. We've got the emergency for admin assistant to the town administrator.
Well, we all know that's an emergency.
I mean.
Thank you for the support, Matt.
For like a year.
In, in the past, it is an emergency for sure, but in the past.
In my mind.
We've been begging for it.
In, in the, in the past, I mean, that I recollect, emergency meant that they hired the person, the person started working, and then we got the paperwork, but it was only good for a certain period of time. So, I mean, us not approving it is not gonna change things. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
There's Art.
Art Lawrence, chairman of the, what do you guys call it?
PQB.
The emergency PCFs is a, basically is a joke. They were put in, they were put in just for one person here, and that was Randall, so he could go out and hire a plow driver in the middle of a storm, and he had, he had that person for two weeks. Then it became, you know, non-management one-on-one, people don't plan, and this and that, and then all of a sudden, you know, I, I'm inundated by these, these stupid emergency ones. We don't like them, and, and we shouldn't have them, and I'm, I'm gonna make a, a, a real push on this in the first of the year, that we get rid of them, except for maybe Randall. If you can't manage your department better than that, there's something wrong. And obviously, there's something wrong. We're fully staffed in the, in the fire department. I always get emergencies from there. Oh, we gotta start our guy right away. Why? These are on-call people. There's plenty of them over there. Why do you need to start them right away? I get them from the police department. I get them from every department. I get them from the library. Huh? So we gotta be careful, because once somebody starts working, you better have some type of paperwork, even in the library, somebody gets their. of paperwork, even in the library, somebody gets their hand caught in the Xerox machine, the town is liable, right, if we don't have the paperwork. So we've been sort of accommodating people, just so that we would have this, you know, a sort of a chain of evidence, but it's gotta stop. It really has to stop, and people have to wake up and plan their departments and plan, you know, their succession. Now, every once in a while, I heard this van driver, his surgery got pushed up. Okay, that may be an emergency, but they should be far in view between. Sorry for the rant, but it's been very, very controversial, and I just wanted to get the paperwork, so, you know, the person's covered by Workman's comp, you know? If they don't have the paperwork in, all bets are off.
So are they good for two weeks or twelve weeks?
They're good for two weeks theoretically. Temporarily's are good for twelve weeks, and that was, you know, in case they're just replace somebody that needed, and then we have to be careful there, because anything over twenty hours, you gotta pay benefits. People forget that, you know?
And you're gonna address it in the.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Ed to attend the department head meeting and just lay the law down, sorry, we're not gonna accept these anymore.
And I've got a different idea on things too, and I talked to Art about it also, is that, and I have an idea what drove these emergency pieces. And in my mind, and I'm gonna have the conversation with the Board of Selectmen, I've talked with Art about it, I hope to talk to the PPBB about it, is, in my mind, if you've got an approved position, and it's in the budget, and you have somebody leave and you're gonna hire somebody, and there's no change of hours, there's no change of the rate of pay, what have you, there's no effect on the budget, I believe that that should be, department head takes it, and you can start with me or whatever, for my signature, it's gotta go to accounting for a signature. That person then has to distribute it to the PPBB Finance and the Board of Selectmen, that's it. To me, the only thing that really the PPB should be dealing with is change of hours, change of rate of pay, you wanna hire somebody that's got experience at above a step one or what have you, I think that's where, you know, they should be dealing with that stuff. Or you wanna create a new position or that, that type of thing.
Ed, you gotta be very careful, and it's called transparency. So when somebody's gonna be looking for something, you better get it out there on the website, you better get it out in the paper, or whatever you need to do. So, I mean, just allowing a department head to, you know, nilly-nilly something.
Well, like I say, you, you might, you've got a permanent Town Administrator now, so you might wanna.
But we have a bylaw.
And I've got the HR duties, you might wanna say, okay.
Right, but we have a bylaw in place, and we have rules and regulations in place, and they would have to change before it's done, the stuff you're talking about.
Yeah, but two, two things, I agree with you theoretically, but I can't think of too many times, I mean, I hire and people leave, and you're lucky if you get somebody in before somebody leaves, there's usually a drop-off, so it, it's a real negative to any department to have gaps like that. So I get, get what you're saying. I also don't think that we should hold people hostage, because we've had problems with our Finance Committee being able to meet regularly.
Ray, I'm just.
One thing that I'll say, that I wanted to say, like, Art, and, cause I'm the liaison of PQB, like, you hustle, when you get these, we have a meeting immediately. And so, I mean, Art does a great job of not being, the PQB is not the bottleneck here, and so to your point. But I, but I think I'm in more support of having more eyes on these things than.
I mean, the problem is, we don't, you know, as I always say, we're a small little town, right, so we don't have an HR department, I mean, if we had an HR department, all this would go away. I mean, I always hated HR anyways when I worked, but, but we wouldn't have that problem, I mean, right? But we don't have the full-time HR, and, you know, we do the best we can, but a lot of it is planning. And I'll be darned, and I don't see a hell of a lot of planning around here, to be honest with you.
So it sounds like there's some discussion in the new year, and if we have to change bylaws, if we decide that, we can do that, if not, we can.
Yeah.
So, okay, but for right now, we, this, so the emergency is two weeks, I was thinking twelve weeks, but that's for the temp.
That's a temporary, yeah.
And that doesn't have to go to the Finance Committee, is what I was told, just told, right? Emergencies don't have to go in front of the Finance Committee? Is that true?
No, that's.
So they'll have to go through every, okay.
But it's more after the fact, because they're emergencies.
Okay.
Okay, so we have these two emergencies, that Admin Assistant, Temporary Van Driver, we have a motion and a second, I believe, if I remember correctly. Okay, so any more discussion on this before, okay, so all in favor of approving these two as emergencies, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And who did the motion, who was the second?
I seconded it, I know that.
Who did the motion?
Down that end of the table.
I thought Reenie did.
Reenie? She's taking the blame or the credit, however you look at it. Okay, now the next one is part-time, Kathryn Workman, EMT, Fire EMS Department, this came up last meeting.
Yeah.
Was that something the PQB wanted to talk about?
Yes. We're very nervous with this, for the obvious reasons of nepotism. I know things have been signed and Ethics Commission, whatever documentation has been signed by you, but we as a board feel very uncomfortable here, and we've seen some court decisions and such where towns have been fined up to $10,000 for, for issues like this. I know it's very common, my father was a fireman also, that, you know, firemen breed firemen, breed firemen, and I understand that, but, you know, in most cases that I've seen that, especially with my father, these were volunteers. Now we have a paid, we have a paid department, and it's a whole different, I think, a different ballgame. So I just wanna be careful that you're aware of what you're signing and agreeing to here. I believe the young lady has already started, and she's getting paid, because, you know, that's how it's done with a strong chief, but just, just be careful, that's all.
But I guess, you know, based on the memo that you prepared on this, have all those disclosures been, are you satisfied?
No, no, we're not, absolutely not.
No, and look, as liaison to this, we've, we've talked about this at, at high length, high length, and I, I just don't think that it's the, I don't think it's a good risk for the town, especially when we, when we, when we've, you know, I don't know what the numbers are over there, but they're in the forties, maybe even close to fifty. I mean, I, I, I'm sympathetic to the fact that, you know, firemen breed firemen, and that, and that this probably would be fine, but I think that to compare this to some other departments and where it's happened before, which are larger departments or city departments, where you can clear, where you can have a clear delineation of supervisory roles compared to our department, where, I mean, you frankly can't, and especially with scheduling and everything else, I'm just not sure that this is a risk the town should be taking, frankly. And I think it sets a precedent that's not, that's not a good precedent to set.
Well, it's not the chief that does the scheduling, and it's not the chief that does the sign cards either.
He's the supervisor, though.
But he wouldn't supervise her, his daughter.
How is that, I just don't, I don't see how that's clear.
I'm just saying, it's not uncommon, it's in East Hampton, it's in a lot of towns. Yeah, yeah.
They have multiple people that are full-time, you know, they have multiple people on full-time, full-time.
But if we were to get the kind of disclosures and sign-offs that are called for in these court cases, would that satisfy everyone?
How would you monitor it? And then what would be the process for if somebody had an issue within that, I'm just trying to think of the other people in that department, like, what is the recourse or the options of the people that are in that department that see something that they don't like? They're certainly not gonna go around their boss to come to a Select Board meeting.
No, they'd report to Ed, the chief reports to.
Or they're just gonna stay quiet about it and either put their head down or quit, frankly, if they didn't, if they don't like it. I don't think it's normal human behavior to like, go around your boss to report something to Ed, like, I mean, personally, from my job, I just wouldn't feel comfortable doing that.
It's a chain of command, you're not satisfied with your boss, you go to the boss's boss.
I suppose, but then you.
The boss, I mean, the Select Board is the fire chief's boss, but it's a strong chief, and we don't have say over personnel issues normally and all that type of.
Right.
Procedures and policies. We just hold him accountable for his actions, we can't get involved in depth in.
Then why do we have this?
Oh, this is an ethics thing, we gotta decide if we wanna approve it or not.
Yeah, but if you go back to the history of the fire department, this has been a common thing for a long time. When I was back on it, I was on it back in the eighties, and there was a lot of family members, and that's been carried through all the way.
This is a little bit different in that the family members aren't working adjacent with each other, this is a, this is the supervisor, unless you have an example.
I was on, my dad was the chief, and I was on in the department.
Okay, great.
And I had, I had four of the brothers that were on as well. But everything was run through the Select Board, and anytime you wanted to appoint or anything to do with money, all ran through the Select Board. That's the way they handled it back then.
I appreciate the example, yeah.
And I know, you know, Barkum, the chief Barkum, his son was on it, Cleta, I mean, I mean, it's just been a.
In this fire department here?
This fire department has been like that for as long as I can remember.
Yeah, the precedent has been.
But whether, you know, you wanna change that.
So Art, what's, Art, do you have, do you have anything to say to that?
Well, the thing is that what they, what the PQB gave us here, it looks like the Town of Oak bluffs, going back to twenty thirteen, several members of the family, yeah. So what I think Jim said, there's a lot of that going on, but what was presented here, there's a lot going on of violating Chapter 268A, which is a conflict of interest law. So depending, I believe, on how a particular chief handles it, it's whether it runs smoothly or violates the law.
Right.
That's the key.
He still, you know, he has to meet the law.
So this, this is a tough one.
But I guess the question is, how do you become aware of it?
That's my, that's my, that's really my issue, is that, I mean, Reenie, in a perfect world, you're right, you go around, if you have a problem with your boss, you go around your boss, your boss's boss, but I think the outcome of that is fairly obvious, which obviously violates laws as well, but then you end up with, you end up getting fired, or you end up, you know, being shown the door.
Well, you gotta remember recent history, I had a fire chief that did payroll for a relative that worked for him when the person wasn't showing up, and that went on for quite a while. Before it was discovered.
I mean, you have a lot of headaches in this town, I don't know if we need another.
So, yeah, it was.
We did.
Yeah, and that was brought up, and that particular fire chief is no longer with us for.
Yeah.
That reason and others, but, so that, that can happen, and it has happened to us, so.
That can happen to somebody that's not related to the chief as well, that was, that was a fraudulent.
Well, right, but when it's, when it's a relative, you know, that just kinda speaks to why this law is in effect.
Right, I understand.
Yeah. Good memory here, do, we don't have a motion on the table to do anything, yeah.
No, we don't at this point.
And Art, do you have anything else you wanna say about this, based on what's come out of some of the meetings?
No, that's, that's pretty much all.
So unless somebody wants to make a motion one way or the other, this is gonna.
Hang Chad.
Stay. It'll die here.
Who's, I mean, if we approve this, and there is a problem, it's the chief that has to follow the rules and regulations for raises or promotions or discipline.
All of that's true, but then how do you, but how do you find out about a problem? And is, is finding out about a problem by getting served with a lawsuit, I guess, is the question?
And I guess.
In the extreme case.
And I.
That's, that's where, you know, I'm just thinking of the worst case, which maybe isn't necessarily fair.
I understand, I see exactly where you're coming from.
I wanna say, on, on the other side of the question that we're not looking at, if you have a chief who has a relative working for him or her, try to make it generic, even the perception of giving favors to that relative is gonna turn the department, you know, against each other.
It can change the whole culture of it.
And we've, we've had issues with the fire department that we don't wanna revisit, let's face it, and we got a fire department that's running smoothly now, everybody's working well, so will this, if you think you're doing a favor, will it really turn around and, and make it worse because of somebody saying they have a perception that it's favoritism?
Yeah, and then they leave, and then we're, then we have a personnel problem, and we're not fully staffing our shifts, because people don't wanna work.
And you're, you're fairly, you're new on, on the board, but boy, we went through some rough times here a few years ago.
Really?
And the chief has really righted the ship, so to speak, and it's running well. So I guess, I'm gonna say again, is there anybody that wants to make a motion either way on this? Okay, so I guess.
Well, can we just move it to the next meeting? Just, I just wanna think about it a little longer. Don't kill it yet, can we, can we look at it at the eighth?
If you wanna, if you wanna make that motion, we'll see.
And in the interim, talk about, you know, getting the documentation that this memo calls for, so that at least you have the assurances and that there are consequences to not following this.
Correct, I mean, yeah, if they put the right document.
So that everybody knows, and then go from there.
I'll make a motion that we table it until the eighth of January, and we make it.
I'll second that.
Okay, okay, go ahead. Can we, can we get an opinion from an audience member or not?
You did a motion, are you doing discussion?
We're doing discussion on the board, though, and.
I can't.
No, you can't join in. Okay, so we got a motion to continue this for another meeting, and I believe this is the second meeting we've had this, so.
We've had it on for a while, I think.
Right, this is the second.
But is she currently working right now?
Yes.
And being paid?
Yes.
So we keep putting it off, and she keeps working and getting paid. Has anybody watched? I'm sorry, Tammy Willen is 298 College Highway, I'm sorry.
Okay, but thank you for bringing that up.
But can, is there a way to go and ask the other employees, how is she working now? Is there any, you can't.
That's not an issue, yeah, but thank you for bringing up, she's working.
I didn't know she was working.
So again, it's a good point, if she's working, and we're not gonna make a motion on this, then we're, we have liability going here longer.
Well, what is the, the power, the chief, does the chief have the power to hire whether we say yes or no?
Well.
With the strong chiefs?
Strong chief, but.
It's really a moot point for us then at this point.
Well, not really, because we, we direct the chief, and if we're directing based on our vote not to do something, and he doesn't do it, then there's an issue we have to take up.
Yeah, well, I think I'd like to see it one more month, just.
One more month?
I mean, I'm sorry, the eighth into January, just to get my head around it one more time, you know, to make sure the paperwork's in place, if there is any possibility that he could put the proper paperwork in place to where he meets the law, I may be comfortable with it, but I would like that time to research that, that's why, I'm looking for the eighth.
So we have a motion to postpone it one more meeting, any more discussion before we vote?
Well, technically, not the meeting of the third, but the eighth, so going to the eighth, or the eighth, yeah.
Which is two, two weeks away, three weeks?
Correct.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm opposed, because.
I, I wanna, yeah.
We have, we have a staff member that is being paid, and it's, it's too big of a liability at this point.
I am opposed, I, I think we should decide on this and stop kicking, I mean, unless, and Jim, I mean, do you have, I mean. We already voted on it, so.
Two weeks, or roughly two weeks.
We've got a three to two vote on it, so it gets approved. So continue the discussion, we, what do you wanna see by that next meeting, Jim and the others?
That's what we gotta figure out.
Well, I think we need to figure it out now.
What we need is a policy.
Based on, based on the information that we got from the PBB about the documentation that should be.
Should be placed, and going through the ethics.
On record, yep.
Here's my thought, my experience is that this person, the ethics law falls on the person, it doesn't fall on the employer. So my recommendation is that this person, if she, she hasn't already contacted the Ethics Commission and get in writing their determination whether that is feasible or not, and what parameters they would recommend they be put on it. And if we can't have anything from them in writing, then I think that's.
And I think, you know, I'm, I'm looking at two weeks away, let's, let's, just be put to bed by the eighth, I mean, one way or the other, I would think we should be able to, you know. I would think we should be able to, you know.
And there's no policy in the personnel policies art that says that, uh, people of the same family shouldn't be in a supervisory, support a relationship that are in the, within the department, there's nothing like that in a personnel policies ma- uh, no.
I mean, that's just nepotism one-on-one, I guess you'd say. Yeah, and we understand that the fire department's a different animal, but, uh, we gotta protect the town, I think that's why we're up.
That's what I'm wondering about.
Okay.
All right, that was a long one.
Flip the page over here. Licenses permits, uh, Rite Aid number one zero zero five eight, conditional approval based on receiving check. If I understand and remember right, uh, this was on the last agenda and they hadn't paid at that point.
Yeah, and I, I followed up because I knew that there's been a change of ownership there where Walgreens had, they merged with Walgreens or bought out or what have you. So actually, once I got the correct contact information from, uh, what we had from, from the renewal last year, uh, they were very responsive. I had the paperwork back in one day and they said that they'd be processing, uh, the check to send out this week. So, uh, we've got, get the paperwork, so my recommendation is that the board approve this conditional upon actually receiving that, uh, check.
One of my questions was, is it still Rite Aid or is it Walgreens?
It's still Rite Aid.
It is?
Yeah.
It's owned by Walgreens doing businesses.
It's Rite Aid, yeah.
I'll make a motion when we approve it.
I'll second.
On the, uh, basis we received the check before you send it out.
So a question here is, the check is due by twelve thirty-one eighteen.
Yep.
So can you make it conditional upon receiving the check prior to twelve thirty-one eighteen?
We're not gonna send it out, we will not send it out until the check's here.
Okay.
So if it comes in January fourth, they won't have a, you know, common vic for, you know, four days.
Okay.
But then they'd be entitled to it.
So we have a motion and a second, conditional upon receiving the check before sending out the license. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stop and save extra mart, uh, all paperwork, check and everything in hand?
Yes, taxes are paid up and then both of those, so, yeah, everything's in, in good condition. And then both of these need all your signatures, so I'll have you sign them, uh, at the break.
Okay, so we have a motion on stop and save?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Francine, did you sign these warrants?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Number P nineteen dash twenty-four for two hundred eighty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and sixty cents. And PD nineteen dash twenty-four for forty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Okay, so that's the two that are already signed, we don't need to have a motion on that? No other documents requiring signature? No minutes to approve, calendar announcements, January third, just for the schools and January eighth and twenty-second? And February TBD, but if you're okay, I think we can wait till the January meeting to do that.
Well, we had a meeting scheduled.
For February fifth.
Prior to the.
Special meeting.
So we have the first one in February.
February fifth.
Right, six o'clock.
Is it the fifth?
Six o'clock.
It was supposed to be, yeah, six o'clock.
Yeah, we do have the, we did do that last meeting.
Just realized I don't have my phone and I feel naked. Can't check anything. Okay.
February fifth, is that what you said?
Yes, February fifth, six PM.
That would be, yeah, at the Norris.
At the schools.
At Norris, yeah. Okay, articles for Springtown meeting, that's just a placeholder, does anybody want me to, well, we have, I had two new ones actually, uh, marijuana medical zoning bylaw and marijuana adult use zoning bylaw we have. Do you want to talk about those, Ed, or Jim, that you're on planning? Or you just want to keep them there as a placeholder? We talked about it last time.
The planning board submitted them, so, uh, are they in the town clerk's office yet for review?
Yes.
They are.
So they're in the, they're available in the town clerk's office, so you can review those. I highly recommend that, if you're gonna go to the town meeting, you, you read this, it's pretty involved and I think it's very important. And if there's any issues in there that you're not comfortable with, be prepared, we can make amendments on the floor. I mean, the planning board, we, we put our best foot forward and thought that's what would work for the town, but it's, it's the townspeople's meeting and they can make any kind of, uh, amendments to that. But it's important that we have one, because if we do not approve this, then it's open season and then anything goes. So then you can have as many marijuana shops and growing facilities in the town as they apply. So it's important, this will limit to how many we can have, where they can be, hours of operation and so on. So, uh, it's an important, uh, it's a very important bylaw, so.
Yeah, and so just, just to clarify for those listening, like this, we're not, and I think that there are some people that, that won't see it this way. We're not voting on whether or not we can have these or not.
Correct.
We're voting on the rules with which we're allowing them to be in town.
That's very important.
Because that, that ship has already sailed, just to be clear.
Right.
So we do want rules in town so that they don't just show up everywhere, and that's what we're voting on, not whether or not they're gonna be in town or not.
Correct.
And it, it would limit them to a maximum of two in town.
So please, so I guess, just to reiterate what Jim said, like, please read this, we can amend it on the floor, but we, we can't amend, like, we can't prevent these from coming to town. We need to have rules in place so that we can control them, and if we don't pass this, then they will be uncontrolled, so it'll be a worse off scenario.
It'll be controlled by state and it's, there's no, it'll be no limit.
Can you explain, Jim, because we already did pass a moratorium for two thousand and eighteen, this moratorium vote will be for another whole year?
No, this is not a moratorium vote.
One of, one of them was, I thought, um.
The moratorium that we have in place ends December thirty-first of this year.
Of this year, right.
So at the end of this year, we do not have any rules and regulations in place. But because we held a public hearing and we've advertised this bylaw, because it's a zoning bylaw, it actually, from my understanding, it's, it's like, if you're gonna make a zoning change and you notify the public that you're gonna do it, everybody runs in and wants to change it before it's enacted. So there's a law in effect that once we advertise it and hold a public hearing, that bylaw will hold until the town meeting. If the town meeting votes no, then it's a different game, but if they vote yes, so we will not get a lot of applicants in January.
And, and I believe you actually have to vote to remove the moratorium.
Yes, that will also be.
Okay, okay. And the moratorium only goes until the end of this year?
Yeah.
Right.
It was, it was decided not to extend it.
I thought I went to a presentation, not the most recent hearing, but before that, when the representative from the state, the one that was advising on this whole thing, you, we, I thought the planning board had voted to extend the moratorium, no, is that not true?
That never happened, it had to go to town meeting to be extended.
Yes, it would have to go to town meeting.
They talked about it, but they decided, since we're gonna have to have them, let's have the rules and regulations put in effect.
Sending the moratorium.
No, uh, because we're like one month away, it's.
Okay, uh, forest management article, that's, that's a new one that was added, and that's just to see if the town will vote to allow proceeds using a revolving fund obtained by Forest Management of the Town's Conservation Areas, using best management practices to be used in conservation-related expenditures for the town's conservation areas or take any other action. So that's on the, uh, the warrant.
Can you explain the other one, MGL, chapter fifty-nine?
That's the one that the reference service agent Jerry Pocat was here talking about, but I have discovered one, uh, thing on that through the DOR is that, uh, to accept, uh, that provision to shorten it from two years to a one-year wait, you have to actually do it for all the clauses, you can't limit it to just twenty-two D.
So really, it's not gonna, not gonna help then?
Well, it would still help, but you've now expanded the impact.
And, and that's what we gotta discuss before then. Okay, need a motion to pass the warrant, uh, maybe on January eighth, there's reading a note here. Okay, so we're gonna put that on the January eighth, yeah.
Well, what, what you want to do is actually pick a date to actually close the warrant.
Two weeks before?
Well, no, you wanna, yeah, I, I, I mean, I'd say close it on the eighth, uh.
Give two weeks.
Yeah, and then, like I say, uh, your next meeting's on the twenty-second, it's real tight for signing it because I think it's gotta be posted on the twenty-third, I think Lucy told me. So, uh, might want to have a special meeting before that to actually sign it.
Okay.
Set it up, we'll be there.
You need a motion to do that now?
Yeah, we would.
So I'll make a motion that we close it, um, on January eighth, the, the warrants, the submission of warrants.
Submission of warrants, yes.
Correct.
Okay, I'll second it.
Any discussion, January eighth, sound okay, gives people still a couple more weeks to submit articles for the warrant? And obviously, they can bring them up on the floor of the town meeting if they wanted to, outside of this. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And you just, I've got the East Street Bridge on there and then, you know, that, that would be, you know, if the board wanted to, and if you wanted to do this, it would also have to go through capital, is that if you wanted to put an article on to borrow one point six million for the balance to do the bridge.
Okay, so we're down to open time for the public.
I'm sorry, can I just ask, uh, you just said that the East Street Bridge, so basically, we got a million dollars from the state, we need to close a gap because it came in higher than we expected, right? So you're talking about putting, asking the voters of the town in, as, as opposed to losing this million dollars by the end of fiscal year, do they want to go ahead and fund this? And, but you mentioned the capital, so are you talking about?
Well, if we're gonna borrow, our bylaws say that anything, anytime we borrow it, has to go through capital and it'll be voted on, so I don't.
Yeah, okay.
In my understanding, it was before I got here, that something came up that that didn't happen, so.
You had to have a special capital planning.
Yeah.
So, so capital doesn't currently have a meeting, so he's the liaison, so that's, just saying, he's gonna have to, they're gonna have to meet before the eighth and.
East Street Bridge, fine.
Do they have to meet before the eighth, Ed, to, to vote on that capital planning? Or is it just once we put it on the warrant, they have to meet before it goes to town?
It would, they'd have to meet before it goes to town meeting, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, we have to decide.
Well, if we want to make a warrant, we could meet before the eighth and then make a warrant, correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
Or you could.
An article.
An article.
Yeah, warrants a total.
Yeah, I got you, yeah.
Okay. Okay, now open time for the public, not gonna read all this, but after last, last meeting, maybe I should. We're gonna try to limit it to five minutes each, uh.
That's about covers it.
Yeah, normal courtesy, of course, for everybody, so if you're, anybody here for open time for the public, you can come up here and if there's more of the ones, just line up behind. You were chosen the speaker, I tell.
Do you want to go through the rules?
Well, I, I did say five minutes.
Five minutes, hang on.
Common courtesy, it's fine.
Well, my name is Ralph Strikers and I live on fifty-seven Gilbert Road. My wife and I moved to Southampton in two thousand nine to begin the next chapter of our life, that being our retirement years together. Our house is one of eleven homes on our private way. And everything was going fine on our street until a gym was built at the end of our street and began its operation. Today, we have strangers driving down our street on a daily basis using this business. We live on a private drive. Once a quiet, peaceful street, it now has issues that affect the quality of life on our private way. Maybe some of you on the select board have driven down the street. As you go down the street, you'll see on the left-hand side protected land. And you'll see these signs periodically as you drive down the street, which is about a quarter mile. And on that protected land is a gym. From day one, the process of building this gym has been bizarre. First, as residents on our street, we were blindsided by our neighbor who said simply to us at one of our association meetings that he was simply going to build something on his property to, uh, increase his, you know, he had a garage and he wanted a little bigger space. So we thought it would be adjacent to his house or right next to his house, or maybe at the end of his driveway. But instead, it was put across the street on the protected land, which serves as a buffer for the protection of the Manhattan River. How could this happen? Especially with our neighborhood being zoned for residential use? Yet, we have a gym. It's a small gym. Second, permission was granted by the town of Southampton for our neighbor to build a garage. A garage specifically for storage purposes, according to his building permit. This time, the town of Southampton was blindsided. This, it was always meant to be a gym right from day one, whenever he took out this building permit. So here we are. Two parties who are taken advantage of, the residents on our street and the town of Southampton. We ask the select board to please bring our neighborhood back to what it once was. A residential neighborhood with the quaintness and quality of life that one would expect to find living in Southampton. Do you have any questions?
Now, we've heard from some of your other neighbors on this also, and I know it's an ongoing process with the building inspector. Uh, Ed, can you give us an update on, on where that is? Has Tom brought you up to date on that?
Uh, I know, he's working with, uh, the, uh, with town council on that, and then he's gonna come in and give you an update in executive session this evening.
Okay, so he's been working on it, going through the process, and believe me, we, we hear what you're saying and we're following through.
Well, I thank you for listening.
Well, and, and last time, just to make it clear, the speaker last time says he heard that that was approved by the board of selectmen and that was never discussed with us, we have not approved it, so don't want you going away thinking otherwise.
We said last time, and we will say it again, we hear you loud and clear and we support our building inspectors, uh, the process of what's happened, which has been a cease and desist order, and, uh, now the process is unfolding like, uh, our town administrator just said. So what you said was accurate relative to the fact that the Conservation Commission had approved it as a garage and, um, we are, um, there with you as the process unfolds.
Thank you.
Sometimes takes a little while, but sorry for that, but we'll get through it.
Well, we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for coming here, appreciate it. Is there anybody else?
Tammy Willenis, two ninety-eight College Highway. I guess it's more of an asking. When you guys are speaking, is it possible that you be able to speak into the mics closer and not sitting back in your chairs and giving your discussion? Because people at home cannot hear you.
Physical, uh, demonstration here.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Are we actually sitting back while we're talking, I thought we were.
Some are very good about it and then, and then, then side conversations will happen or, and, and it's hard to hear you guys when you're actually talking to us and to the tape, to hear you.
I think this is an issue we're gonna bring up with the ECAT, uh, folks when they come in.
That would be awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay, is there anything else we need to discuss before we go into executive session? Anything I missed?
Wish everybody happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Yeah, happy holidays.
Thank you for coming. So we are going to go into executive session. And actually, I believe, Ed, we will have to reconvene, won't we, on the interim police chief issue?
Yeah, we may have.
Yeah, good point.
So we're gonna adjourn to executive session and we will reconvene in open session. And we're going in executive session, six sessions, Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A, number three. For the first five, that's a discussed strategy with respect to litigation, if an opening meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. First one is on seventy-one Gilbert Road zoning enforcement, second one is on the. Second one is on the local 98 International Union of Operating Engineers for the highway. Third is on the police officers, New England Benevolent Police Association. Fourth is on the dispatches, New England Benevolent Police Association. Fifth is on the E Street Bridge. And then the last one is Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, Number 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-unit personnel, interim police chief contract. So roll call, please, go into executive session.
Let's make a motion first.
Yes, we need a motion first.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Groden, aye.
Roland, aye.
Martin, aye.
Tishman, aye.
Libri, aye.
Okay, we're going to executive session in five minutes. Thanks. So we'll be coming back out.
Do we want to, do we want to...
Okay, welcome back to the December 20th, 18, open session, we just came out of executive session. We discussed a interim contract with Lieutenant Illingsworth, which he accepted, and we agreed to a salary for the interim position of, I just put that, got it right here, thank you, of $96,918. So we have a contract with Lieutenant Illingsworth starting December 31st, and after that, we will be researching the job description, make sure it's up to date. We were looking at, we're looking at local salaries to make sure our salaries are in line, and then we'll be posting a permanent job description for the permanent chief. Did I miss anything?
Within the department?
With, well, it'd be internal posting first. Missed anything? Okay, so if we're all set, then we need a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
Wait, you gotta...
Okay, let's, let's back up. Okay, we need a motion to approve the contract as discussed for the chief.
I will move.
Interim chief, yes.
I move to, to hire Ian Illingsworth as interim police chief.